North Smithfield Town Council, November 1st, 2021. Madam Clerk, will you leave us in the prayer and the pledge, please?
Roll call.
Here.
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 Here. Open forum pursuant to Rhode Island general law 42-46-6. Okay, so what we're going to do here, what we have tonight, is we have open forum, but we also have a public hearing. So, open forum, let me backtrack. The public hearing is on the ATV issue. So if anybody's here to speak on the ATV issue, hold off, and you're going to have your chance to speak at that time down the agenda a little bit. Open forum is for any other issue that you want to talk about, okay? Nothing's off the table, you're welcome to come up here and speak, except for the ATV issue, because we're going to be addressing that during the open, uh, public hearing. Okay? So would anybody like to be heard for open forum at this time? Come on up. Just state your name and your address, please.
My name is Michael LeDuke, 911 Sockett Road. Today I'm speaking in regards to Item J in new business titled Resolution of the Town Council's strong recommendations to be issued in immediate withholding of our RIASC membership dues. Whereas the title of Item J seeks to misrepresent the particular opinions of certain town council members as a consensus or resolution the town has come to. And whereas the presence of Item J-
You just want to watch that.
Sure. Do you want me to move this?
No, 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 the mic's not.
Okay. Okay.
Why don't you start over, just so you'd be on the record?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Whereas the title of Item J seeks to misrepresent the particular opinions of certain town council members as a consensus or resolution the town has come to. And whereas the presence of Item J in today's agenda makes the town council seem fully prepared to repeat its previous mistake of respectfully requesting something of the town or school based on personal politics of town council members. Whereas other state school board associations' decisions to leave the NSBA have no bearing on the town council or school committee in North Smithfield. And whereas the Rhode Island Association of School Committees should not be condemned for saying they would cooperate with federal law enforcement in response to threats and violence. Whereas Item J states that such cooperation could lead to adverse engagement between federal law enforcement and the constituents in North Smithfield, which reflects the idea that our constituents either are or are capable of producing disruptive threats and/or violence. And whereas any constituent making threats or inciting violence absolutely should be met with adversity. Whereas the RIASC ought not need to consult the North Smithfield School Committee before stating in correspondence that they would cooperate with federal law enforcement. And whereas Item J states that such correspondence demonizes North Smithfield parents, which is another insulting insinuation that our town has a problem with parents and constituents causing violence. And whereas if our town did have such a problem, cooperating with federal law enforcement would be generally a good idea. And whereas decisions made by other school committees in our state do not compel matching decisions be made by North Smithfield School Committee. And whereas the Gloucester School Committee Resolution employs politicized and partisan ideas that indicate their decisions should not be modeled or repeated whatsoever. Whereas the proposed resolution is just as inappropriate as the disastrous 2018 Nike Resolution. And whereas resolutions such as Item J cause more division, conflict, and strife in a time when there's absolutely no more room for those things, I respectfully request that the town council either omit from the agenda or vote against Item J today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Would anybody else like to be heard? Open forum? Name and address, please.
Michael Rapco, 250 Greenville Road. It's the first time I've been here in the new building. But I want to talk about the item with the police station. It revolves, it revolves around renovating Bushy. It's strange, over the weekend, there was an article in New York Call about federal prisons and the issue of dereliction of duty. And I guess this term is used in the military, but now I think it applies to what happened on the town council five years ago. Dereliction of duty, and I'll explain it why. Five years ago, the PBC and the architect Studio Major told the council in writing and verbally that the roof, the parapet brick, which is the brick above the roof, and the basement wall with water damage needed to be fixed. I admit the PBC and architect did make some mistakes, but the council refused to address these serious issues. That, and they, these issues couldn't wait for five years to fix them. And if you look at the presentation tonight, all those issues have resurfaced with serious damage. It's unfortunate that, you know, the council, shouldn't they have taken an oath of office to protect, protect the town from harm? You know, so when you, when you show photos, I suggest you put your name next to the photos where the damage was done. And it's not all council members tonight. You know, I'm speaking about the council members that were here five years ago. And you also look at, you know, it's unfortunate the council wanted a new building from day one. They did not, we've gone through three architects, and we still can't figure out what the hell's going on. So, I mean, it's unbelievable that, you know, how much money did we waste on architectural fees over the last five years? So how do we move forward? Can Bushy be rehabilitated for something more reasonable? Five to seven million? I think the original bids came in at three, but they needed four million. So why can't we figure out a way to do something on a smaller scale instead of trying to spend $20 million? And I say $20 million because the estimates that are coming in are not even good. They know the prices are going to go up. And you know what's interesting? Because of COVID, the whole work, workplace is changing. Buildings are too big. You don't have to build large buildings anymore. To take an example, in the Sunday paper in The Call, the Apple iPhone now has an air tag for $29, and people are using it to track people and to find stolen goods. I mean, that simple solution of that $29 feature, couldn't that replace, you know, the Sally Port in a police station? If a suspect goes in and he has that tag on him by our police officers and tries to escape in the parking lot that's fenced in, you can tell right away where he's going to go if he escapes. And we're going to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars for a Sally Port? When there's technology that can probably help us instead of the expense? And the same thing goes for the vehicle processing bay and the maintenance bay at the police department. Why can't we do it at the highway department? They could use the lift and the space. It'd be a great idea, they repair the cars already, so why can't we use that space? And the interesting thing, too, is about the municipal court. Five years ago, the former police chief and the current police chief did not want the municipal court in the police department. They're very adamant, we had to move it out of the police department. Why can't it be moved here? Why can't it stay here at Kendall Dean and use some of the EMA space for the, for the, for the court? It doesn't, you know, it, we're wasting a lot of space. So I guess the other issue is the, is the police union. Why can't we get the police officers to exercise at Planet Fitness? We have a multimillion dollar exercise facility. Why are we spending money for an exercise room in a brand-new police station when you have a, a brand-new facility right down the street? So, you know, and we also were spending $100,000 for police cars. Fully equipped, computers, guns, you know? Technology's changing, we're going to put more technology in those cars. We're going to solve more crime from those cars than we are in the police station. The future's going to be in those cars with the technology. It's not going to be in a building. And we got to work with Walmart to reduce the shoplifting. So there's less crime and less arrests made to bring them back to the station. You know, the taxpayers understand that you also have to support other departments. We have the fire, the highway department, and also now we've got Halliwell. You know, maybe the highway, maybe the fire department wants a new central location with more equipment. And how about the highway department? They probably want to do more paving of roads, and they probably need, even need a 75-foot bucket truck to trim trees. All the trees are dying in North Smithfield. And now we've got Halliwell. Now we've got to spend money on Halliwell. So the council needs to support all departments equally. We can't put all the money into the police department, we have to compromise. In summary, the council may talk about reducing this $20 million package to be a hero to say, oh yeah, we can, we can do it for 15, you know? But that's not the case. The taxpayers knew five years ago, you didn't listen to them. So now how are we going to believe you that you're going to spend 15 or 20 million dollars? You didn't listen to us five years ago. So don't waste your time trying to be a hero. Instead, focus on Bushy rehabilitating the building and do the right thing. And try to put more technology in place so that we can solve problems and do it right. So thank you very much, and I hope, you know, I hope this goes well tonight during your discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to let you know, there will be a public hearing on the police station, and I encourage you to come back and state all your concerns, and they will all be answered at that time. Is there anybody else? Yep.
Mike Clifford, 489 Black Plain Road. I also want to speak about the police station. Because you're going to determine the format of that meeting tonight, and apparently it was going to be discussed and put up for a vote. I heard this, I watched, I read the report that's on the town website from that time, and I watched the YouTube video of the presentation. And after watching that, hit YouTube, reading that report, I'm convinced I agree with Mr. Rapco, that, you know, there's so many foolish things in that thing. I think that is playing, you're scaring everybody, the $18 million building, and then when we figure out what's in there, everybody's going to raise their arms and, you know, write the tax, and then all of a sudden you'll come forward, say, well, you know, we can cut $5 million, so we're pulling every 13, which is still too much money. But I think it's another case of game plan, game switch. And I point to an example to prove that to me. When I listened to the YouTube video, I heard about the garages and the Sally Ports, and the storage garages, the maintenance garage. And when the question was asked by the town administrator, what's the maintenance garage for? Because of all the repairs in the entire apartment? The answer that I think I heard coming from some of the audience was, well, occasionally the police do minor repairs like windshield wipers. We built the garage so they can, and seriously, not one of you said, wow, that's why we built another garage? To me, when I looked at those plans, you've got about over 1,000 feet in the Sally Port. That sounds like four cars to me. And then you've got the other thing, in one part of the report, it's called the storage garage, and another part is called the inspection garage or something, and that looks like it's about 960 feet. And then you've got the maintenance garage, 230 feet, which to me sounds like two, two cars. Four cars in the other one. So you've got like 10 cars, plus a car, a parking lot, a car park for all police vehicles. You know, if they need to change the wiper blade, why can't they go into the Sally Port? I don't think we have four cars waiting in line at the Sally Port alone, prisoners every moment of every day. I'm going to ask for other information from the police department for all the breakdown of the crimes. How many people are actually in this prison at night? How many people do we arrest? I also heard Mr. Baddeley make a comment, you know, that we have a bigger problem. Some people referred to Cumberland saying, we have, we're not as, you know, we have more issues than Cumberland. I don't know where he's getting that information from, because in Cumberland, like in 2020, if you go to the state police website, they have a crime report. Cumberland had 650 arrests last year. We had 376. Cumberland has three times the number of residents. I mean, there's 1,000 things in that report that I'll pick apart when we have this little public hearing. But I hope that you set the format of the public hearing up where I get to ask a question, somebody from the committee answers it, and then I get to say, no, that's not accurate. Because I already went to one of the meetings where we taped that broken company show, and the presentation was made by the architect, and he blatantly stated, the last architect, Mr. Secoja, that yes, the parapet work was in the bid specs. And it was not. And I came before the council a week after, and showed them the document that was in the bid specs, the questions asked by the developers. Why isn't the parapet being replaced? The brickwork being repaired? And I agree with him as well. I think it was, you know, delinquent maintenance on the part of the town and the treaty. They knew all along that parapet work was making the, the damage to that was making the building deteriorate. It's kind of like Halliwell School. Some people were involved in Halliwell School, too. Delay the maintenance until it becomes, then we have an open house, and everybody sees what they decided. That building is not beyond repair. And that building can still be made into a good serviceable fire in the police department. And I heard Mr. Baddeley say, we have four options. He told you you had the option to put on the ballot doing nothing, doing $1.2 million repairs, which is the money left from the bond issue that the voters voted for to renovate the police station, not to build a 21st century megastructure with all the toys and bells and whistles. It wasn't that. We voted for a renovation of that building. I have a clean, modern facility that was, had a safe work environment. Speaking of safe work environment, Mr. Baddeley and his committee met in closed session to discuss asbestos abatement specialists. Well, how do you, how does a meeting in closed session, how does that fulfill the letter of the law? If there's asbestos or any toxins in the building, the police in the building have a right to know, and should have, all those requests should have been posted in the building. And I don't understand why it's to be held in closed session. It's public health and safety. The, the third, the third choice he set was the renovation of the building. According to the standards, the last architecture was $17 million plus. We use the same building, we add on additions, we make the new structure inside the old structure, basically. It wasn't a renovation. It was a 21st century, all bells and whistles and whistles galore, okay? Then the other choice, the fourth choice was, build a new $18 million. $18, $17 million. I want a fifth choice. I want the choice that I voted on in 2014. I want the $3.42 million renovation. That's what the voters should be getting to put in front of them again. You decided, the voters weren't educated enough to know what they were voting for. You decided we need a superstructure and a 21st century police department. We didn't decide that, you decided it for us. I'm not worried about the Russians stealing my vote. I'm worried about the elected officials in this town stealing my vote. So I want my vote back. You have five options. You can put on the agenda for the, you can put on the ballot the question of, do you want to move forward with the extensive renovations that were planned in 2016? We went out to bid, the highest bid came in at $3.24 million. I want that to be an option. Give me a choice between a $17 million plus renovation and an $18 million plus renovation. It's giving me a choice. It's telling me what you are going to do. I want a choice. I don't want that nonsense. Some of you who are sitting on here never even had the courtesy to meet with Mr. Rami, the architect who came up with the first set of plans for the, the bid specs that came in at $3.2 million. You didn't base your decision then on fact, you based it on hearsay. And you, you made a point at the last meeting, Mr. Beauregard, of stressing that your, your opinions and your actions need to be based on fact. So I'm asking you to do some due diligence, meet with that architect, look at those plans, and see very much your opinion. Don't go on hearsay. Don't go on, oh, he, he, he violated the building codes. He did not. I picked up the phone and called him, I read that one in the paper, and he had a very good explanation. Said nobody ever heard it because nobody wanted to hear it. We were tied that project, hijacked at the time in 2016, and I called it then. I said, the school department's not going to end up in the KD building like they were supposed to, and they never did. They wanted a new original police station, you're not going to renovate this, you never did. And the parapet work, give me a break, I've been at them meetings. I've got a tape with the local members were saying, you know, the longer we wait on the parapet, the more damage it's going to be. I think it was designed, a lot of this happened by design. So, the other things, the other items I'll ask when the public hearing comes up, but I'd like you, when you're debating about what to put on that agenda for the public hearing, and what questions to put on the ballot, don't just make me choose, yes, $17 million renovation, $18. Give me the one that says, you know, $3.4. If that $3.2 is probably under $6 million. And I am going to see Mr. Rami, and I'll pay him for his time like I did before to go over the bid specs, the bogus bid specs that you let everybody to believe were for a $1.2 million renovation that were really actually for a full renovation.
You have to wrap it up.
Yeah, I know what I said. For a year and a half, he sat silent, let the committee think that the bid came in for $1.2 million renovation, when the bid specs that were issued were for just about a full renovation, except of course for the parapet work, which was the most important thing to do to preserve the building. So I'm tired of games, you can speak, and I want my vote. So I would appreciate it if you'd consider giving us a real choice, not just giving something down our throat until you get what you want. Thank you.
There's going to be a public hearing on the police station. I encourage you to come to the public hearing and voice your concerns. Anybody else like to be heard during open forum at this time? Come on up. Just state your name and your address, please.
Sandra Sores, 171 Sales Hill Road. I'd like to address a couple of issues that were discussed two weeks ago, and it might seem like it has to do with the ATV, but it really doesn't. There were comments made about videos and photos taken of an underage boy. Way off, way off base there. Those photos were taken exclusively to illustrate to the police and town officials how loud and intrusive the riding of the ATV along our property line had become. To insinuate that those photos were taken for any malicious or lascivious purpose is ridiculous, not worth discussing, and possibly libelous. There was also comment made that we had filed a complaint about a form, the former owner of the property running a business on the property, which is in a residential zone. Gotford Brothers was running a construction business out of the garage with employees coming to work Monday through Friday, doing fabrication in the building and trucks coming and going, obviously in violation of the residential zoning laws. When it was brought to the attention, town officials acted and running a business in a residential zone was stopped. I'm skipping over some other things to do with the ATV, just to follow your, your request. At the conclusion of the meeting on October 18th, my husband was not in attendance. I approached Mr. Cass, Mr. Case, sorry, I'm not sure, inside the chamber and asked if he would be willing to step outside and have a conversation with me. My hope was that maybe we could reach an amicable, amicable resolution to the problem, maybe asking for a little different location of riding on the property, the back of the property, behind the houses. I thought maybe he'd relate to me differently. He agreed, we went outside, we locked that glass door over there. He was not at all receptive. He became very loud and agitated and began using foul language. His behavior and actions of hands and arms being thrown around attracted the attention of Mr. Beauregard, who was standing over there. Mr. Beauregard came out, tried to calm the situation down, at which point Mr. Cass looked at me in the face and said, "F. Dill," that's not what he said, but I'm just going to leave it at that. At which point that conversation ended, I walked away.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, would anybody else like to be heard?
Yes, I will. Paul Sores, 171 Sales Hill Road. And I have two things to cover. One, I believe belongs under open forum, and I will also speak to the issue of the ATV ordinance at the appropriate time. I was unable to attend the October 18th meeting as I was out of the country. However, I did watch the video of the meeting, and rather than address the issue of the noise ordinance and the proposed amendment, Mr. and Mrs. Case have embarked on an attempt to impugn my integrity with misinformation, false allegations, and lies. I must therefore refute their accusations. Mrs. Case stated that all the complaints regarding the ATV or dune buggy or whatever it is were made by me, but I was informed by a police official that the first complaint originated from another home on Sales Hill Road. They were not all mine. Mr. Case made several false claims. He stated that, quote, "I went to the newspapers." That's not true. I made no contact with any news media, and I'm sure that's easily verifiable. He said, "I was told twice by the police to delete the video, which was taken for the sole purpose of showing it to the police as proof of a violation, and that I shared it with others. No officer told me or even suggested that I delete the video. I deleted it of my own accord in the presence of the officers, and I certainly never shared the video with anyone." The most egregious falsehood stated by Mr. Case was that I made no attempt to discuss the ATV issue with him. Having put up with the excessive noise for a couple of weeks, on July 14th, I approached the garage at 169 Sales Hill Road, where I saw two people. At this point, I had not met anyone living on that property. There was a teenage boy and a young man in the garage. I introduced myself and asked to speak with their parents, assuming they were siblings. The young man introduced himself as Steve, said he was the boy's legal guardian, and I should speak with him. I told Steve the ATV noise was very loud and disturbing my ability to enjoy the peace and quiet of my home and yard, and I asked if he would be considerate and curtail the activity. He said he thought it was okay because it was private property. I told him our noise ordinance prohibited excessive noise on public or private property, and I suggested he obtain a copy of the ordinance. The next day, July 15th, I was in my backyard when the ATV started racing back and forth along the property line again. As I was watching and taking the aforementioned video, Mr. Case, whom I had never met, approached me yelling and cursing at me. When I asked if we could have a civil conversation, he called me dickhead and walked away. That was our first meeting. The next day, July 16th, reflecting on Mr. Case's irrational behavior, I thought perhaps he had some misconception of my conversation with Steve. So I sent this note, which was hand-delivered to his door, July 16th, 2021. Dear Mr. Case, I wanted to send a note saying that I regret that we seem to have gotten off on the wrong foot. Perhaps I took the wrong approach by asking Steve, who identified- Perhaps I took the wrong approach by asking Steve, who identified himself as your son's guardian, to stop riding the ATV on Sunday afternoon. My only words said to your son were to ask his name. I'm not sure what you were told, but I identified myself and was respectful. The conversation with Steve was cordial. I suggested that there were trails to ride under the power lines behind the houses, and Steve said they intended to cut a path to access them. If you wish to talk, feel free to knock on my door. Signed, Paul Sores. I received no response to this day, except for some more swearing. It's my opinion that Mr. and Mrs. Case have little or no credibility, and going forward, I will refrain from responding to anything they say. One more comment. If Mr. Case truly believes the ATV activity is not a violation of the noise ordinance, he should invite the police to take a decibel reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to be heard during open forum at this time?
You're way off track. You're way off track. This is personal now. Way off track.
All right, I know. Listen, Mr. Vadeney makes a very good -- let me finish. Mr. Vadeney makes a very good point, okay? I'm going to let you respond, but we're not going to get into a big back and forth right here, okay? You can respond to what he, you know, what you want to say, but we're not going to go back and forth with this.
Exactly.
Okay? This is getting personal now and...
Yep. And that's what I was going to state. My name is Todd Case. I live at 169 Sales Hill Road. I am the reason for this meeting. Did I appreciate the way he confronted my son? No. Was the information given to me slightly altered? Possibly. But I did not appreciate the fact that he took videos of my son. That's it. That was really the main concern of my issue. We'll deal with this ordinance thing when it comes. But he never should have taken any video for evidence or whatever of a minor on my personal property. He was wrong. Some things that are stated were wrong? Yeah. Oh, well. Did he come and see me personally? No, he never tried. He may have left a note that was never signed. If it's not signed, it's not real, as far as I'm concerned. So that being said, that's all I got.
All right. Anybody else now who would like to be heard during open forum? Okay. We're going to move on. I'm going to close open forum at this time. And we're going to move on to number four. North Smithfield Town Council is sitting as the Board of Licensed Commissions. Discussion by Council Board of other action on new mobile food truck licenses. We're going to do these one at a time. Now, let's address the first one. Chris and Nicole, are they? I met you the other night.
Yes.
Okay. I pronounce your last name, sir?
Piasik.
Piasik? Okay. Chris and Nicole Piasik, DBA Non East Kitchen. I see that all your, everything is in order here? All your licenses are in order, inspections? Would anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. President.
Ms. House?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the general business license for Non East Kitchen as all requirements are in order.
What's the motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Good luck. The next one is Nick Dowling, DBA. Okay, you're going to, how do you, Nick, is he, Nick, yeah? Okay. How would you pronounce that name, that business?
Lemigatu?
Let me...
Lemigatu?
Let me get him. All right, I see. That's catchy. All right. Okay. Once again, all the paperwork and inspections are in order. If anybody would like to make a motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. President, I'd like to make...
I just want to say something. This young man was born in North Smithfield.
Who's that?
Mr. Dowling.
Oh, okay. Yep.
Born on Summit Avenue corner. Went to culinary school. And during this whole thing, he decided that have to make a living, pay off the money I spend on certification. Tell himself, speak to himself. He called me, he said, what do I have to do? Told him, did everything he could say himself, and is very excited and said, "I know anybody that really likes a gourmet BLT, come see me." So I invited to interview the young man. The young man, maybe he's like a little boy.
Sure.
Which is a lot younger, but makes me a lot younger. But I think you'll all enjoy this, and I thank the town for working with people today with these mobile restaurants so that they could make a living.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the general business license for Nick Dowling, DBA Lemigatu. All requirements are in order.
Okay. Do we have a second? We have a second? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Moving on to number five. Should we just skip over number five and get to that one later or... Okay. Moving on. Ordinance Amendment. Section 8-122 of the Code of Ordinance, Chapter 8, Article 7, Motorized Vehicles, ATVs or Fraud Vehicles. I will now entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing on ATV Motorized Vehicles Amendment, Section 8-122.
We have a motion to open the public hearing? Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. The public hearing is now open. I'm going to quote you up by, in order, in the order that you signed the sheet. This, now with a public hearing, it's unlike open forum, okay? It's a very narrow lane that we're in. We're going to discuss the ordinance. We're going to discuss the ATV ordinance. We're not going to discuss any personal agendas, any personal conflicts or anything going on. We're going to discuss the merits of the ordinance, okay? Open forum is for all the other stuff. Public hearings are very specific. Okay? So let's begin. Keith Clockers.
Keith Clockers, 676 Pound Hill Road. I brought with me tonight next-door neighbor, grandson, daughter, and son-in-law. We all tend to ride four-wheelers amongst our property, through our property, into each other's property, and out of each other's property. I have been to this council meeting 15 years ago regarding ordinance problems, et cetera, et cetera. If there's any way this can be taken up, rather than chastising 12,000 other citizens for two neighbors that can't get along, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to, you know, belittle any of that, but, you know, as a small businessman, I find that it's very hard for me to come to a town council meeting like this and do this because I'm always going to make enemies and some of these people are my customers. But anyway, if there's any way we can make this happen without chastising the 12,000 other citizens in this town, I would like to see that happen.
My name's Harley Mitchell. I live at 808 Farnham Pike. Thank you for giving me the opportunity tonight to speak on the ordinance amendment for motorized vehicles. I think the noise ordinance as it currently stands should remain with no amendment to it. I utilize both an ATV and UTV for yard work, bringing things to the chicken coop, and occasionally just riding for my own enjoyment and fun break from life on our own property, which is something I've done since I was a kid, and it was the way I learned how to drive. When I ride, I have never had any issues with my neighbors. I always stay on my own property, and I've never had any issues or encounters with law enforcement when riding. If this proposed amendment passes, I would no longer be able to ride in my yard except for yard work. We only have four and a half acres and 400 feet of frontage. You would be taking away my ability to ride for enjoyment as a law-abiding citizen in this town. Thank you for your time this evening during the public hearing. I hope you take all of this into consideration as you make your decision coming up and for all of those who speak and oppose this amendment.
My name is David Mitchell. I also live at 808 Farnham Pike, North Smithfield. I spoke last time at the last meeting when I was here. I want to say good evening to the council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me also to speak. I'm here tonight to oppose the proposed amendment to the 300-foot motor vehicle ordinance. Under the existing ordinance, there are real-life examples of decibels and the sound. You have it in your article of noise. It goes anywhere from 20 decibels to a ticking watch up to a jet airplane. A chainsaw falls around 110. All motorized vehicles as designed, minibikes, go-carts, ATVs, UTVs, they all are manufactured to a specific decibel level. That level ranges anywhere from 65 decibels, which is one of the machines I own, up to 85 decibels. There are ones that are louder than that, but that's normally the range. An actual chainsaw runs at... A chainsaw runs at around 110 decibels. I'm opposed to the 300-foot distance because this may be a very slippery slope you're going to get into. If I have a neighbor who's running his chainsaw, cutting firewood for the winter, he can't do that within 300 feet because it would affect the noise ordinance. That would also include lawn mowers, leaf blowers, snow blowers. There's a whole bunch of things that it's going to affect. I'm opposed to the 300-foot ordinance.
How you doing, Scott Wright, 105 North Main Street? I've been a resident here 51 years. I started riding probably my first minibike around eight. I think the cops have been called every year since. But, you know, they show up, you're not doing anything wrong, and everybody goes on their way. What I don't want to happen, and going back to when we changed the outdoor burning, I don't know who was here for that, the outdoor burn quite a few years ago, we used to be able to burn leaves and everything else. I was on the fire department in town. I got a call to the person's house that was complaining about the burning, and I was supposed to put the fire out. I get that the guy wasn't doing anything wrong. He was burning some sticks in an outdoor fire pit. Smoke actually going downwind from the house out was complaining. So I said, well, I'm not putting the fire out, and I'm going to go to where the complaint is. Excuse me. So I go to where the complaint is, and there's a woman upstairs, outside on her stairs, coughing and hacking as I pulled up. And I said, well, it's freezing out here. Can we go inside and talk? So we go inside. Her house was full of smoke from the wood stove. I said, ma'am, doesn't this bother you? She says, no, his smoke bothers me. So 13,000 people got changed, right? We changed all the walls to the outside burning, and she moved out of town. So I don't know why you should be getting involved in, again, just like they got up to go back and forth right in front of us just now. I don't want to hear what they're doing. I don't care what they're doing. But I don't think that the town should be getting involved in personal matters. Let lawyers do it. Let them keep doing the complaint, right? That's called harassment. Because that's how we, I'm not going to come to you. I get complaints at my house. You know, I'm sitting, I'm sitting and waiting right now, and the time's going to come, and it's going to be a lawsuit. Not you guys. Has nothing to do with anybody. So I think it's common sense. Let the police do what they do, let the lawyers do what they do, and you guys run the town.
John Russo.
John Russo, 29 Pine Court, North Smithfield. I actually thought this was about the dirt bike track on Homestead. I've been dealing with it for five years. It's probably 20 feet from my deck. I think the 300 feet is too much, but I think 20 feet is too low. So that's my complaint. I actually thought this was about Homestead Ave., which is off of Pine Court and 100 Hill Road. But I guess it's not. It's been going on for five years. That's all I have to say.
Is it Joey Savini?
Joey Savigny, 1790 Pound Hill Road. I've also been a resident of this town for 48 years. Had dirt bikes, three-wheelers, four-wheelers growing up. Neighbors never complained. My son rides a dirt bike. I have an acre and a half on Pound Hill. We put a small track in the backyard behind our house. He goes through the woods. Never once had a neighbor complain. I think this is a neighbor issue. It's not a town issue. And at that point, you guys should stay out of it and let the neighbors deal with it. That shouldn't affect everybody else in this town. That's what I got to say. I'm opposed to it.
I'm Greg Johnson, 97 Brentwood Drive, North Smithfield. I have the same issue. The family has 25 acres, and we've ridden dirt bikes all our lives. Even my 85-year-old father still goes to get his mail and rides around the property. And I'm just thinking, the restrictions is, it will affect us on our borders, but we've never had complaints. It's something we've all done all our lives. That's why we moved to North Smithfield 30 years ago, from Cumberland because it was getting too tight, too compacted. This is the woods, as far as I'm concerned, and I'd like to keep it that way and not be restricted on our pleasures in life. That's all I got to say.
Hi. My name is James Carey. I've been at 119 Sales Hill Road for 18 years. Moved out of 100 to be in a rural area so I could have a four-wheeler and my kid could have a four-wheeler. We can enjoy the land and enjoy riding. But there's no way, I agree with the first guy, these two people should have just ironed out their differences between, before coming, going public, whether civilly, hiring a lawyer, but to have it affect everybody in the town to change this ordinance is just completely unfair, and I'm totally against it. And I really hope you decide to go against it because it's not fair to anybody. Anybody that owns an ATV, it's a group, it's a family. We have fun. We're not out to harm anybody. We're out to have a good time, and especially on your own property. I use it to work my land, harvest wood, and just like everybody else here, they all do the same thing that owns property. And there's never been any complaints from my home on 119 Sales Hill Road. Everybody gets along. So I don't know what's happened here. I know there was a new owner that took over this property, and all of a sudden, the crap hit the fan. But it's not fair to anybody and any of the residents that ride ATVs. We need to keep things the way they were, and they should remain that way. These people need to figure it out on legal terms, and it shouldn't have anything to do with this council changing ordinances, nothing at all, because we're all respectable people. That's why we're in this town. Thank you for your time.
Elijah Laduke.
You can skip me. I thought that was for...
Okay. Yep.
Michael Rapko, 25 Old Green Road. I wasn't going to speak on this issue, but after I listened to what's going on, a lot of people in this audience came from 100. And we moved to North Smithfield to enjoy the outdoors. I got four acres and a couple acres across the street, and we enjoy property. That's important about living in North Smithfield. You can use your property. I did surveying work 10 years ago, and it's very difficult to measure a distance without a surveyor. So you need to tell me, every time there's a police problem with noise, somebody's got to hire a surveyor and mark off 300 feet. And you can't mark off 300 feet on town-owned property, nor can you mark it off on national grid property. So how are you going to control... So how are you going to control 300 feet without a surveyor marking, and you can't go onto someone else's property to mark it? So it doesn't make any sense what's going on. I'd rather see Paul and the neighbor figure this out, come to some agreement, get it done, and let the council focus on something that's more important. Thank you.
Michael Clifford.
I signed up for the open session, but I'll just say I'm against this ordinance.
Okay. Paul Sors. Sure. Yeah.
I am not anti-recreational vehicle rider. I've been a licensed rider for 49 years. Next February, it'll be 50. I started out riding in the dirt, but I didn't ride around my neighbor's property. My parents would never have allowed me to disrupt people the way that this has happened. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, I wanted to discuss a way to maybe make an agreement between the property owners, and I got said a few to my face. So if... Two things. There isn't a noise ordinance. That's not being enforced. We tried that. We tried that. This was not a knee-jerk reaction to a noisy weekend. We did talk to the police. We did try to get them to enforce the noise ordinance. And we were told that it was difficult. They couldn't do it the way it was written. And maybe if there was some more language put in there that would assist them, something could change. But I am not against people using their property the way they want to. But I do think we have some responsibility to respect each other. I agree. I agree with all of that. But as I said, I'm not anti-this. My family had snowmobiles for decades. We found appropriate places to ride. When I rode a dirt bike, I wasn't riding by somebody's... 40 feet from somebody's bedroom at full throttle, back and forth, over and over again. That is not acceptable. That's the way I feel about it. You know, I wish we didn't... We need the noise ordinance as it's written to be enforced. That's the way I feel about it.
Paul, do you want to speak?
Yes. I also understand people's fear, but some of the things that were said, I think, they don't need to fear. People just talked about they want to haul chicken feed or hay or wood or work in their garden. There are exceptions for those things. What... The purpose of this proposal was to correct bad behavior. I'm sure there's a lot of ATV riders in this room and everywhere that are respectful, that don't purposely try to aggravate their neighbors. The question is, how do you separate them from the good people? And Methuen, Massachusetts, has this very ordinance, and it seems to be working well for them. And I thought it would work in our town. The thing is, again, this irrational fear that if you get on your ATV and you drive around your property in a respectful manner, why would anybody complain? It's the few people who are purposely aggravating others that I think this ordinance would address. Maybe 300 feet's too much. Maybe 200 would make more sense. I don't know. If people behaved more courteously and respectfully, we wouldn't need it. But there are situations where they don't. And the statement that, you know, you're going to affect 12,000 people with this ordinance, I think is looking at it backwards. What you're going to do is protect 11,000-some-hundred number of people from having their peace and quiet disturbed so that they can't even enjoy the sanctity of their home without excessive noise, and you're going to stop the bad behavior of the few. I think you got it upside down when you say that you're going to affect 12,000 people negatively. The problem is enforcement. I called the police because of the problem. And Sergeant Freeman said to me that they have great difficulty enforcing this ordinance because they have to get a decibel reading. So the police come to a home where this activity is happening and excessive noise. They don't have an opportunity to get the decibel meter out to prove that there is a violation because the operators just run and hide, whether it be in the garage or they take off into the woods or whatever. Sergeant Freeman said to me that he thought that maybe some additional language would make it easy for the police department to enforce this law. And would like to be heard.
You're welcome. Mr. McGee.
Yeah, I came tonight...
Just tell me, could you say your name?
Tom McGee, 125 Black Plain Road. I came tonight because people were calling me about, you know, this ordinance. And, you know, my kids, everyone drove dirt bikes forever. There's not really many places to drive anymore. All those spots are gone. We used to be able to drive all over the country, everything, and we weren't in anyone's backyard. And I understand the problem, but that's a matter of respect, like they say. It's neighbors. Where... You're not going to ruin everybody's time for neighbors fighting. And like I said, John came up here because that guy's been dealing with a track in his backyard 20 feet. He hasn't come and made an ordinance about it. He just bothers him, but he... There's nothing he can really do. And that's why he came to say, geez, what's going to happen? Maybe it doesn't have to be 300. But in all honesty, everybody has to take care of themselves. Neighbors should be respectable for each other. I know it's a tough world these days. Nobody has respect for anyone. That's what's wrong with the world, and that's why we're in the predicament we are. And people have to come and start making laws about everything. You know, less government. Let's just live our lives and try to like one another and try to get along. You know what I mean? If you're not going to get along, it's never going to work anyway. Whether you make this law or not, it'll encourage more fighting because more people will be calling. And as far as dirt bikes and, oh, like Paul, you say you don't want to let anyone just get on the back of their quad and do some wood chopping. Well, that might be all right. Oh, you like wood chopping. Some people like to ride at 50 miles an hour through the woods. I'm one of them, you know? But like I said, we're not going to all... I'm so sick of cowering down. America's cowering down. We're all sitting there too afraid to talk. You know, it's just ridiculous. It's like, you've got to stand up for your rights. Here's an ordinance. Here's another one. We can't have stone walls. I mean, I've been fighting things forever, you know? But enough is enough. Stop the government, and let's live our lives, and let's really respect each other and get along.
Thank you. Okay, if anybody wants to follow that up.
Joe Offier, 850 Iron Mine Hill Road. You know, at the beginning of this debate, you had mentioned that this wasn't to be a personal attack on one or the other, and it's a neighbor dispute. And unfortunately, that is exactly what it is. So why is everyone being punished for one neighbor's problem? Mr. Sors also indicated that he obviously had a problem with a noisy neighbor for apparently trying to run his business out of his own yard. So it seems evident that there's maybe a, you know, he has a sensitivity issue to noise, or maybe his wife does. Or maybe he should move to Weymouth where his ordinance is already passed. Keep it out of North Smithfield. The townspeople have come out tonight, and they've very clearly expressed where they stand on this issue. Should be shot down immediately. Thank you.
Anybody, come on. Yep.
My name is Lauren Case, 35 Holmes Road, North Adlera, Massachusetts. The objectional behavior is by my son, who is 14. So a couple of things I wanted to just point out that he's not there during the week. He lives with me during the week. He doesn't ride early in the morning because he's a 14-year-old boy who likes to sleep. He doesn't ride all hours of the night because that's just not who he is, and that's not how I raised him to be. So Mr. Sors...
Mrs. Case, what we're trying to do is, I said we're going to keep this very...
Agreed.
Stay in the lane, okay?
Yep.
We're not going to go...
Understood. So I took it upon myself to...
No, just let me finish.
Yep.
Okay? So during open forum, I gave a lot of breath, big, large breath, okay? But right now, during a public hearing, we're in a very narrow lane, and we're going to stay in that lane. We're not going to get addressed... You got to address the council, not address Mr. Sors. And we're not going to bash anybody. That's not what this is about.
That's fine. It was fine. Yep, absolutely fine. But I want you to know that I dissected your Article 7, and I will not bore you with the details about your definitions, about when it was originally passed, about how it doesn't specifically say off-road recreational vehicle other than in the definition. But I also want you to know that when you look at Section 8-117, Measurement of Sound, first off, I believe the gentleman earlier spoke about ATVs ranging from 65 to 85 or 90? Okay, and a lawnmower runs at 90 decibels, which runs continuously for an hour? So there's that. But going back to Section 8-117, Measurement of Sound, it's written there with eight items, and it's not written with an or. It's written with an and. So 1 through 7 and 8. So you need to take into consideration the totality of the circumstances for all eight items under Section 8.117. And that is it, gentlemen and ladies.
Anybody else? Come on up.
Todd Case, 169 Sales Hill Road. And I'm a real little upset that my wife couldn't defend my son, but he could bash her. There's a problem there.
You already... All right, go ahead. Anybody else?
Richard Severia, 108 Sales Hill Road. Ladies and gentlemen, I moved to this town 36 years ago because I find this to be an incredible peaceful town in regards to open country with respect to property owners. I have... I am an ATV rider. My wife has an ATV, and I plan on buying one for my granddaughter, a 50cc cycle. Of course, it's going to have the motor on it, the muffler. It's not going to have the stingair exhaust because I find that to be annoying. If this ordinance goes through, I'll be breaking the law, allowing her supervised ride on my property because it will be within 300 feet of my neighbors, and then they will call and complain. And that makes me a violator. I am opposed to this ordinance. Please.
Is somebody over there? Yeah, come on up. You'll be next, sir.
My name's Ron Bouvier. I live at 39 Middle Street. Back in 1997, I moved here, and I built my son a motorcycle track. My neighbor had two rottweilers, and every time he would go out and ride around, these two rottweilers would run over. Fence was maybe three, four feet, and they'd get up and he'd scream and yell. He would come out, complain about my son, and say things to him. So my son came in to tell me one day. I said, "You get back out there and you ride." I went into the garage to hide to see if this guy was going to come out and say anything. Wouldn't come out because he knew I was hiding. Okay, so this went on for a while. I still let my kid do it. That's just... There's a reason I'm telling you this story. My other neighbor has this lawnmower that's crazy loud. He wears big air muffs. And when he cuts his grass, the guy with the rottweilers never complains, never says a thing to him. It's the loudest lawnmower, really is. My son had a little 50... He was eight years old at the time. 50cc quad. 50cc, barely made any noise. Had a muffler with a baffler, just putted around the yard. This guy, every time my son rode, it's jealousy. It was just, didn't want to see the kid having fun. And that's what's happening here. We have one, two, three people. We're going to try to change an ordinance in the town for that? Doesn't make sense. It just doesn't make sense. Why are we going to appease one, two, three people? It just doesn't make sense.
Mr. Keen.
Hi, I'm Rich Keen, 7 Bamford Street. I didn't come here tonight to talk about this. Actually, I hope to be home by now watching the football game, but I just want to give you a thought. I'm not for or against the ordinance. Like Mr. Clackers, I have... I'm associated with other interests in town, so I really don't want to get involved in a thing. But I just want to give you an idea. In order to do that, I'm going to take you back to some ancient history. Back in 1985, when I was associated with the Primrose Fire Department, head chief, chief chaddy, his job. We had a... That was before the town instituted a burning ordinance. And it would, you know, every year, you know, you'd be issuing permits, and every now and then, someone would complain about smoke coming from the neighbor's fire. So we instituted a policy that you get the permit to burn, but if there's a complaint, you've got to put it out. And that way, the neighbors had to sort out the issue of whatever. That might be, you know, some... An approach they might want to consider. And like Mr. Severia, Mr. Clackers, my grandkids are old enough to get ATVs or dirt bikes or whatever. I've been looking at electric models because I know, you know, neighbors may get upset. And my daughter's got great neighbors. I don't want to jeopardize that relationship. But anyway, just some thoughts. Just want to throw it out there.
Was there anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Chris Bouvier. I live at 759 One Socket Hill Road. I'm actually the eight-year-old that Ron was speaking about. I'm now 32. I'm proud owner of my home at One Socket Hill Road. Chose to stay in North Smithfield due to the type of town it is. I also grew up with my mother in Cumberland, but like some of the others said, we choose to live here due to the type of land we live in. It's not, you know, One Socket. I mention One Socket because I'm actually a police officer in One Socket. One Socket doesn't even have an ordinance to ban ATVs on private property, and that's a city. They do have a noise ordinance. It's 100 feet. However, we don't need a decibel meter or things like that. That's something that maybe could be changed to maybe appease some others. But as far as an ATV goes, if I see it, it has to be an unreasonable sound for an extended period of time. And that has to be within 100 feet, and we're in a tight city. I can tell you, in 11 years, I've never given another kid on a dirt bike or an ATV a ticket for such.
Anybody else? Last call. Come on up. Just made it.
My name is Blair Becker. I live on 8 High Point Drive in North Smithfield. We've been riding dirt bikes on our property. We have our own little motocross track as well. My kid's been riding since, well, since he was like five. We've had no complaints of the neighbors, and we're behind Laurelwood, which is an elderly community. Never gotten a complaint, ever. We've even switched over to electric so that we could ride a little later at night. We have four electric dirt bikes. You can't even hear them. But we also have two race bikes as well. And one of the things I wanted to bring up, I didn't want to come to this, but on Sunday, while I was working on my race bike from 8:30 to... while I was working on my race bike, from 8:30 to probably 2 o'clock in the afternoon, I did a lot of modifications to the bike, I didn't really even run it. What I did notice, though, is just sitting in my backyard, and Route 5 is just literally four houses down to the edge of the road, alls I heard was Harley-Davidsons go by, Hot Rods go by. The elderly complex, alls I heard was leaf blowers all morning. I looked up some specifications, a gas-powered leaf blower, 80 to 85 decibels, a blow pack blower, 90 decibels, someone was pressure washing too, 110 decibels on a pressure washer. Plus you got generators, which we don't use all the time, but I just find it interesting, even our tractor, our lawn tractor, we have a John Deere 110, it's a regular 54-inch deck lawnmower. We wear air protection because it's loud. But the funny thing is, we did, like everybody else said, and I think everybody brought some really good points, we moved to this town because it's an amazing city, amazing town. It's awesome, I love living here. It's one of the main reasons why I did move here. I'm originally from Barrowville, I lived in North Attleboro, I came to North Smithfield. It was mainly because of this. We love the community, we love the school, we love the people, and we've never had a complaint. And just to give you an idea, my neighborhood, we have no kids. It's all elderly people. Not one person has ever come to my house and complained that my kids run around the track or having an issue with it that I'm aware of. I've never heard anybody ever complain. And if they did, I'd be respectful, and we would figure out a better time or a better situation. With the regular noise ordinance, we just make sure that we're not riding at night, except for the electric bikes, of course. But it's funny, I mean, my trash come, you know, they pick up my trash at like quarter of seven, it's loud, bikes are driving by. We've had construction the last four months on our road, and I've never complained. And I hear, and my neighbors cutting trees, and unfortunately, the gentleman that's bringing this up, and what people have mentioned too, I mean, this is right, this is a personal dispute. If I lived next to him, he would hate me. I mean, honestly hate me, and not because of the dirt bikes, because I cut my own wood. I have a wood splitter, I cut my own tiles, do my pavers this summer. I have all the power tools. I switched my leaf blower and my weed whacker to electric, which is a lot quieter, and that's just for all of our own good. But at the end of the day, I just wish, we could just, I'm totally against this ordinance, and that's the main reason why I'm here. And it's amazing to hear some of these people talk about this and speak up and say, I mean, the reality of it is, I mean, I just, I measured my kitchen blender this morning, it was 96 decibels. My dirt bike is 90. So, I mean, it's just, that's, that's what I don't understand. I think, I do, I do emphasize with you guys, I honestly do, because you should have your peace and you should have your sanity and your quiet.
I would not hate living next to you.
Well, I just say, it just, but I do emphasize, I honestly do. And, and everybody should have that, and that's why we have our own property. So for us to have restricted freedoms on our own property that we pay a, we pay a good amount of taxes, I mean, expenses, especially expenses all around, everything's going through the roof. I mean, I'm spending almost seven grand a year in taxes. What, so I can't ride my own bike? Or I can't even start my race bike up to tune it so I can take it to a closed course event, which I've been going to every weekend for months? So I can't even start it up because the police are going to show up and give me a fine? It doesn't make any sense to me. We always try to be respectful, and at the end of the day, I work 50 hours a week, my kid goes to school, and he has a job, so the time we actually ride those things is very limited. So even the people in the back or the elderly community, they don't hear it much, so because we're not there all day, every day. But all day Sunday, alls I heard was leaf blowers, lawnmowers, and tractors, and there was even a guy with a skill saw about five houses down, that was super loud. But not one minute was I ever triggered to the point where I'm going to call the police because I feel like there's so much noise pollution. I figured as an adult male, living in a community, it is what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. Well, actually, we're not going to start getting the, everybody going up twice now.
It's, we alluded to with the...
Yeah, but in fact, then I got to let everybody speak twice, and it'll, we'll be here all night. Sorry, Jim. Thanks.
I knew my time to end.
We're not doing that.
My name is Farrell Laney, I live at 88 Homestead Avenue, and I just want to say, our kids, I'd rather have them be out there riding quads and dirt bikes than being inside their house playing Xbox and, you know, that. I ride out at my house, as somebody was saying about my track earlier, but I try to keep it, you know, not wicked late at night, not early in the morning. I try to do it when they're not home, just to keep them happy. But I just want to have you guys think about the kids, so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm going to make the last call right now. Good? Okay, well, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, so now what we're going to do is, we will deliberate, and you're welcome to, to listen, and, but there will be no engagement. We're going to deliberate among ourselves, I'm going to call the vote, and we'll, we'll see where it goes, okay? On the issue of the amendment to the ordinance, anybody have anything they'd like to... I would like to say one thing, very important, okay? I know Mr. Sores, okay, he is a pillar of this community, okay? And I think he's being painted kind of in a negative light, and that's not fair. This is a guy who has been on the Conservation Commission for years, he sustained an injury during his, doing his work on the Conservation Commission, that he still has to deal with today. He never took a lawsuit to the town or anything like that, okay? So let's not paint Mr. Sores and Mrs. Sores in any kind of negative light. This is an issue that they feel very strongly about, they're not trying to interfere with your rights, but they just feel that they're being aggrieved, okay? So that's very important. Would anybody else like to have, say anything?
I, when my husband and I moved back to this area in 1975, it was a place we wanted to come back to. I look at you all, and I, first of all, I am so happy about the way everybody presented themselves tonight. This town is wonderful. It pains me because I only see good people. And as my grandmother would always say, "Put your beads out, talk to the Lord, and maybe this, whatever you, whatever is going wrong will fix itself." I pray that these two neighbors can fix themselves. And you can't go wrong in North Smithfield, that's why people keep coming back, even after they leave, or sometimes foregoing retirement in Florida because it's not as sweet as home, nothing's as sweet as home. But it's a decision, and the Sores were always dedicated to this town. McGee, there's not another one like you.
We need more like them.
We do.
No one could be that special. So I say, just listen, whatever we say, it's not personal, it's a thing that we feel the way we have to vote. And if my yard was big, I'd let you ride in it, but 100 by 100 won't do it, especially when there's a house on it. Are we ready to vote?
Well, does anybody else would like to talk, speak on this issue?
Mr. President?
Ms. House?
I just also want to piggyback on the character of Mr. and Mrs. Sores, they do a lot for the town, but I also want to bring up one comment that's been made with almost everyone who spoke today, and it's having respect for your neighbors. And I would wish that that person or these neighbors can go away and to their homes and have respect for each other, and ride in the appropriate times, in the appropriate areas, and that way we can get along and move on from this.
Okay, now, what I will do now is I'll call a vote. I'll entertain a motion to amend ordinance, Section 8-122 of the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 8, Article 7. Is there a motion to amend the ordinance? I'll ask one more time, is there a motion to amend the ordinance? And a third time, motion to amend the ordinance, the ordinance dies for lack of emotion. We're going to take a recess, if you guys want to stay, you're more than welcome, but we're going to take a five-minute recess for everybody to clear out. But we're gonna take a five-minute recess for everybody to clear out.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. TJ, you ready over there? Everybody ready? Okay, we're gonna continue now. Where are we? Police station, discussion, vote, or other action on renovation or improvement of existing police station and/or construction of new police station. Discussion by council, vote, or other action on all reports, recommendations, information, and course regarding renovation, improvements of existing police station, and/or construction of new police station. Public hearings, deadlines for bond referendum for 2022 ballot, the schedule and process for consideration and decision. So, basically what this is, is we're continuing a discussion from last week. We're continuing discussion from last week about the nature of the public hearing. Are we gonna have the public hearing before we decide what's gonna go on the ballot? Are we gonna have the public hearing afterwards? So, that's what's going on with this agenda item. So, where it was left last time was we had differing views regarding the nature of the public hearing. And if anybody would like to be heard on this, now's the time. Ms. Alves?
Mr. President, as I mentioned last meeting, that I would very much want to have public meetings or public hearings prior to considering a ballot question because I would wanna get as much of the town input as possible as to what they feel we need or should go and look at the designs, let them ask questions. And I would also like to revisit maybe the prior architecture, see what their opinions are. I mean, this is a big purchase, and I just don't think we should be rushing into it. And then, you know, a few years down the road, we say, well, maybe, you know, we should've done something different. I just think we really need to look into this and not have another project that we say, oh, we should've done this, or we should've done that. So, I am strong opponent of having public hearings prior to creating a ballot question.
So, you're suggesting that we have pretty much an open public hearing at almost anything on the table, getting the public input?
Yeah, and let the architect come back and be ready to answer any questions. And then, let's look at the Studio Major, let's bring that back, and let's look at them and see what they have versus, and what kind of savings we could have, and what kinda... I mean, I can't say that I'm really excited to go out and spend $18 million on a project that, you know, just came before us, and we're gonna go out there and say, this is what we want. I just think we need to have a little bit more input.
Anyone else?
Yes, I have to agree with Ms. Alves. First of all, I think the public should be involved, but I will tell you right now, there's no doubt in my mind that it has to be not renovation. My father graduated from the first graduating class, 19 watt, and the building wasn't designed for the technology, the placement, everything we need today. And what's man... A lot of this is, the inner plan are mandated, they're like state mandates, you need such spacing, et cetera. And as far as using your car to do everything, I won't comment on that one, but I don't think it'd fly. I just wanted to get them in, and perhaps we... There could be savings in certain areas, but if someone ever gave us that place, I'd be very happy, except into this young officer, don't need a place to change blades or any place else. We have town bond for that. But I think the community should be there to voice their opinion. But I would not... Personally, I wouldn't even consider trying to fix that, it'd just be putting another Band-Aid on something that should not even been considered for renovation.
So, you're saying then, you favor... At this point, you do favor police, the new police station, but you're saying that we should have an open public hearing?
Absolutely, on the plans, how they think maybe, you know, could be cut to make it more feasible to pass. But I agree with you fully. You know, it's coming, they're the taxpayers, and they should be included.
Anybody else?
Yep, so, I don't know, I guess I come from a different angle, where, you know, those that sit on town council only hold a seat for two years, and then they go up for reelection again, whether they retain the seat or somebody else comes in. Well, this past November, you know, I filled one of the seats for the very first time. So, I don't know too much about the history in regards to the police station. Not to say that I don't agree that something significant needs to be done, I think that's accurate, but I personally would not feel comfortable not knowing more of the history behind it. Unfortunately, I did have a prior commitment the night that the council met to go over the plans, and although I did read the plans subsequent to that, you know, it is inevitable that there is some sort of monetary price tag that's gonna be attached to it. But personally, I agree, I mean, we definitely need to have some sort of significant, substantial public opinion on that, and, you know, go with essentially what the residents want, at whatever angle that is. So, regardless of whatever side you're on, you know, whatever's decided is gonna be what the town moves forward with.
Anyone else? Okay, I personally think I have a unique perspective on this for two reasons. Number one, I was on the Building Review Committee for two and a half years, three years. And number two, my background, I was a state trooper for 25 years, so I have it... I think I have more of an insight as to the fact that we definitely... That police station we have is woefully inadequate. However, I don't see the harm in opening up a public hearing, and let's hear what the residents have to say. And at the same time, maybe they can hear what I have to say, my reasons for wanting... There can be a little back and forth. I'll give my reasons why I believe we need a new police station. And residents can give, like some of the people over here tonight can give their reasons as to why we don't need a new police station. But there should be communication back and forth in the form of a public hearing. I'm gonna support the police station, I wanna hear, but I wanna hear what everybody else has to say. Anyone else? Okay, so, I don't know if there's a vote necessary to be taken.
Mr. President, I don't believe you need to take a vote, but as was mentioned at the last meeting, I think the council should be sensitive to the timeline, okay? There are two timelines that are relevant. Well, first and foremost, for purposes of establishing the ballot question, there is no state law requirement for a public hearing, strictly a desire of the council, so there's no timeline associated with that. But the ballot question must be presented to the Secretary of State 90 days before, if you want to get the general election in November of 2022. And I spoke with bond council, obviously, bond question or support of the bond question has to be approved by the General Assembly between January 1st and June 30th. There are no deadlines for cities and town bills. She recommended she'd like to see it, if, whatever language you choose, to be, you know, by the end of January. But clearly, if it was February, even March, it'd be enough. It's just about not getting stuck in the timeframe up at the State House as to getting that approved. And the third element to consider that was recommended by bond council is that the... When you go through the numbers, and I spoke with the administrator about this, you should really have the numbers being run by your financial advisor. So, instead of people throwing numbers around, you have that fiscal advisor present, and they can run the numbers pretty quickly, and you can really know what effect it is on the tax rate, what it really means, that kind of thing, if you come up with any kind of numbers. So, those are my only points, but... So, I think if you either wanna decide as a council tonight what that schedule is, that's one thing, to schedule a public hearing, then you take a vote, or you don't need to, but I just want you to be cognizant of those timelines.
Okay. Mr. Neuchtrum, part of... I would insist that if we did have a public hearing, that I would want the architect there, even if we gotta pay him for his time. It's very important that he's there, answering questions. This is an architect that specialized. This company builds police stations, not restaurants, all right? So, it's important that we have them, this architect, onsite, maybe even providing a PowerPoint demonstration, if that's possible. That'd be great. So... Pretty much the same presentation, only now he would be open to questions. I'd like the public to be able to ask him questions directly.
Mr. President?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. Could we also bring back the prior architect, or even bring back some of the drawings or his notes, so we can kinda review those two and just kinda maybe compare the two and get an idea of what was...
If... I won't say, if that's what you wanna do, I'll be... I'm open to it.
I mean, I don't think it would hurt to have a meeting or kind of review with the task force, or, you know, just, or even, I don't know, I just think it wouldn't hurt to have it all out there.
So, we're gonna bring back RGB, who originally started this project? You're gonna bring back Studio Major?
I wouldn't wanna bring back RGB, but...
Or you're gonna bring back Secoshian Associates as well? You need to bring all three of them back, because they've all had a hand in this. Everything is built off one off of the other.
Well, we can look at them, but me, as a council, I would not wanna do business with RGB.
Town has already done business. If you wanna go back and review all of these things, personally, I wouldn't wanna do business with Studio Major, just based on... We did meet with them, we did look at all their drawings. The town actually has all of their drawings. We have them all on file. I can't open them because they're CAD files, and I don't have CAD on my computer. We have done that review. So, you wanna... You bring them back, you gotta bring them all back. If you wanna review the past and start back, then you gotta bring them all back and start at the beginning. If you wanna have a whole history of where you were going with this thing, you gotta go all the way back and bring them all back.
I wanna see where we're going, from one that was $4 million to now we're up at $18 million. That's kinda... There's a big void in there, that we need to see what the difference is.
You could go back to the beginning, when it started out at $11 million, too.
I...
It's been all over the place. And the bottom line is, the project never had enough funding on it. It wasn't a matter of the designs were poor, there was never enough funding to do any of the projects that were put forward. That's why we're in the bind that we're in today.
Right, but before we...
If you would've put in the right amount of money, or found out what the right amount of money was before you borrowed the money, so that you could've completed the project, we wouldn't be sitting here today.
Right, but now, going forward, we obviously need to know the number before we go onto the ballot, so we should be looking at everything that we can possibly look at, to see if we're making the right choices, and we're going the right direction.
Just as a reminder, if you read the report, even $17 million renovation of that building, you still have ceiling issues in the basement, you still have four different levels in the basement, you still have a wood construction building that doesn't meet the current... It's code compliant, but it doesn't meet the current seismic standards that you're supposed to have in a police station. So, you still have all of those deficiencies in a building that you just spent $17 million for, or $6 million for. You're still gonna have all of those deficiencies that have been outlined. You've never had a structural engineer do a review of those buildings? The only one that's in there is in this report. You never had a review of all of the HVAC, electrical systems, plumbing systems? You never had any of those reports done? It's all in this report. We need to read this report. This is what the town paid $46,000 for, to get a report. It was determined by the previous council, they wanted to see those numbers, they wanted to see what the cost was and what it was. And so, you hired experts to do that, and they came in with a report, we need to follow this report. We need to read this report. Those are your answers in this report. Those were never shown in any other report, any other studies that were never shown.
I think the fact that this report that was done by professionals that build police stations...
Well, they build public safety complexes.
Right. Shows, and the other one was about $4 million, this is $18, I think it shows how woefully inadequate that previous report was. But let's, you know, let's get the architect here, and let's hear what he has to say. And he may, even if we don't, can't get RGB here, maybe the architect can address the faults with what was wrong with the other report, you know?
I just think we can't have not enough information before we make this decision.
Well, if we... I'll tell you what, if we can get him here, we'll get him here. This isn't a public hearing.
Are we allowed to share the prior report with the current architect?
I'm sure he has, absolutely.
Does he have a copy of it?
We've given them all the reports. He has all the reports that we had available to us from the town, we're giving to him to do his study. He had all of that stuff. Everything that we had, we gave him, correct?
Can you offer some perspective here?
Yeah.
Please.
But you know, the problem is, people at home can't hear you if you do it from there. We can hear you, fine, but...
I tried to do this probably a month ago, and I'm sorry that you weren't at the meeting. You got three new people on the council, but the previous council listened to what the municipal building task force recommended, and they wanted a study done to compare rebuilding or rehabbing versus a new police station at that location, state of the art with all the safety measures that was done. Everybody's raiding, putting way too much thought into this. It was a study, it's not a design, it's not something you would even go out to bid with. I think it's perfectly fine to get the architect here, and he can tell you from his own experience and answer the questions. You don't need to drag past studies out. They've had a chance to look at it. If you wanna ask them what they thought of the other studies, or why this is different, that's fine, but I don't want any power to bring in anybody else back in, because it's not relevant to what was asked in the study. In other words, let me try it a different way. The previous town council wanted a new look, wanted everything erased, wanted the do-over. That's what the report was. Strictly an analysis on that site, we didn't look at other locations, because the issue was, could we fit something on that site? So, that was what was done. So, getting tech on here, having them do the presentation, having them answer the questions, because they are the experts, is fine. because they are the experts is fine. So I can contact them. I don't know their availability. I'll work with the town clerk to try to establish the time. I assume you're going to want it as part of a town council meeting, separate?
No, I would do, I would do a separate.
Okay.
Yeah. We could set something up separately.
Any particular days of the week that are bad or good or...
Yeah, I was thinking we should probably come up with a date.
Well, at least a couple that I can shoot down.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
What's that?
I mean, are we, are we thinking, are we thinking after Thanksgiving? Before Thanksgiving?
Well, we, we got to get this moving. We have, there is a time issue because once we decide on what's, what we're going to do...
What, how about a date before Thanksgiving and a date after?
Why don't you get some dates from, from Tecton?
Yeah.
And forward them to the clerk and then we'll...
That's a good idea.
You know?
That's fine.
We'll make ourselves available.
Okay. That's a good idea.
That concludes my report.
All right.
I guess we jumped at a gender item, I don't know.
Anybody else? So, okay, so Joanne? Mr. Nostrum's going to get back to you and let you know what dates, Tecton is available, and then we will set up a public hearing, okay? Okay.
Three dates. Get three dates on them. One of them will fit. Right here.
I was just going to say, maybe we can get two, two dates before Thanksgiving and one after, if, if possible.
So we should try and get them all before Thanksgiving because we're just losing time. So we should try and get, see if we can get a date definite before Thanksgiving because we're just losing more time. But also, we need enough time so that we can advertise this so we get as much public participation as possible.
We could do it at the middle school. You think it would be that many?
I mean, I would hope so.
Oh, yes.
I would hope so, too.
I would, I would hope so, right?
Okay.
Absolutely.
They weren't here when we had the first one. They weren't here when we had the first one and it was posted and advertised when they wheeled it out the first time, so. No, they knew. It was in the papers ahead of time.
They woke up after it was in the paper and everybody said...
Joanne, how much time do you need for a, for a public hearing? How much time do you need to advertise this?
It doesn't need to be a legal advertisement, though, does it? Solicitor, just, just a posting that there's a public hearing in the paper somewhere.
And all right now?
And the newsletter and stuff.
You've got to get the dates for us.
I know that's not...
Yeah, of course. All right, so we'll wait to hear back from Mr. Nostrum, then you refer back to, back to us, we'll figure it all out, and we'll, we'll advertise the public hearing. Good? Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
At this time, I want to make a motion that we move up for immediate consideration under new business, item D, discussion by council voter action on award of bid for Elizabeth Ave Sistern since the chief is here, discussion by council voter other action on public works purchase of road salt since Mr. Pendergast is here, as well as discussion by council voter other action on solid waste recycling collection contract at High Rocks.
So we'll move D, E, and F, correct?
Yes.
That's a motion. We have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Chief? Give me a minute now, we can find the paperwork. Got it.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members. I'm here on request of Administrator Zolinski regarding the bid for the replacement of the Sistern on Elizabeth Avenue. Just basically here if there was any questions that you had regarding that project.
At this time, actually, I'm going to ask Ms. Alves to take over because I'm going to recuse myself due to the fact that I do business with the low bidder who we are looking to give approval for.
Okay. So is there any questions from the council? Chief Shadia?
Just so that, I don't know if you've all gotten the history on how we got to where we are today. What has happened with that Sistern on Elizabeth Avenue, this is a result of a, of a policy that I instituted back in 2019 where annually we go around to all of the town's 26 Sisterns to assure that they're all full in the event that we, we have fire in those, those areas. When we started this, we found that the Sistern on Elizabeth Avenue was down quite a bit of water, which typically isn't out of the, out of the ordinary. But then when we filled it up and then went back to recheck it, it was down again. And then subsequently, over time, we found that it was losing water at a pretty rapid rate. So when Administrator Zolinski came in, I brought it to his attention and he got right on it and we had the company come in and enter the tank and found a big crack on the inside, and that's why it was losing water at such a rapid rate. So now, as you all know, that, that Sistern was put in as a result of town ordinance when they put that development in. So it, you know, it needs to be replaced. So that's how we got to where we are today.
And Cynthia, just to confirm, these were funds that we transferred at last meeting, right?
Yes.
Vice President, a little further background on this, too. One of the, what we thought was an option was to repair this fiberglass tank. You can't repair this type of tank. There's also another option to go across the street on another property. The resident, the homeowner didn't want a deed over the property to us for, give us an easement to do it. And that being the case, even if that were to come to fruition, we still would have had to remove the tank and go back, backfill it all on its seat. So what's before you this evening is in the amount of $144,847, $1,444,847. The supplier of, like everything else, price increase. So it's gone up on another $3,510. So currently, we're at, right now, we're at $144,847. So we don't know what tomorrow may bring as far as price and supply chain and everything else we're hearing about. So it's not a case of hurry, hurry, hurry. This should have been done two, three years ago when the leak was discovered. So we're trying to make sure that we've got public safety and the ability for fire suppression out in that neighborhood.
How did we get to $144 from the $132 that was originally bid if the tank price went up $3,510?
But $9,300.
Do you want to jump on Cynthia? Well, $310 was the increase in the tank alone, and then there was, you want to take it $9,300? Cynthia, you want to explain it?
If you look at the attached attachments, the previous planner had been going back and forth with Scott Adler about the, the tank. He had quoted the tank to be $9,300 more than what was in the original bid. So when Tom brought it to your attention back in, I don't remember what it was, I have it here somewhere, in August to be approved, the total bid was $144,000. What do you have? Right. So then I asked Mr. Adler and asked him if there was going to be any changes since it was a few months since the bid was presented. And he went back to his manufacturer and there was an increase of $3,510. So if you take Tom's original quote of $141,337 plus $3,510, it comes up to $144,847. Does that make sense?
And this is a fiberglass tank installed?
It's a portal concrete tank.
That's a question, chief. These are, are they still double hull with fiberglass in the middle with concrete on the outside? Is that still...
That I don't know, Mr. Administrator. I, I really haven't had too many, too much interaction in terms of the bid and the, and the subsequent gathering of all that information. I'm, I'm just here.
This tank that's in there now, the Sistern that's in there now, is just concrete?
Fiberglass. That's why it's cracked and leaking. But when I was, I'm going back many, many years, it used to be a double hull that would have fiberglass encased in concrete.
And we know why it cracked, right?
We're assuming that it's, this one is just fiberglass and I, I can't be, I have to be careful with litigation here. I'm not sure that it was installed properly. From indications that you're supposed to, they brought in outside material to refill and supposed to use the indigenous original soil. And for some reason, that may not be the reason. I want to make this perfectly clear, why it failed. I don't know, but it failed.
This one will be inspected and tested as it's installed?
Absolutely.
Mr. President? I have a, I have a question. First off, Mr. Jesus, great job on the follow-through. As I was reading the email trail, you know, I noticed that you shot an email, didn't get a response, sent another email, finally got a response from him. You know, this, this, this proposal was already, was already approved for the, for the amount that it was. And granted, the, the cost did go up a little over $3,500 for the, the Sistern, the tank manufacturer having the price increase. You know, we said that time is not really of the essence to, to get it in, but my concern is that if we do wait, how long can we wait out in order to not jeopardize that tank manufacturer going up again? Or is there, because I, I don't know if you put, I don't know if you asked him, but, or did you find out if, if that, if that cost will hold, if that price will hold for X amount of months or days?
I'm hoping. I mean, he just answered me on the 18th. So I told him it was going to be on the next council meeting.
Okay. Because my only concern is if, you know, if we say, okay, the $3,500 is fine with the increase, we can't do anything with it, but we wait another two or three months to get it done, then we could be in the same boat nine days from now.
No, once we award the bid and we give them the PO, it's a done deal. I mean, once you all approve it.
We award the bid today, that's the price.
Right, if you would have awarded the bid today, I give them a purchase order and it's done.
The matter of his court anymore, he'd have to come back to us and we may not have to do that.
Okay, and that's my only concern is, okay?
If I might just add something to that as well, in, in the interest of public safety for that area, if the bid is awarded tonight, I would ask if we could get that done in a timely manner because there's no water up there right now. We have, we have nothing up there, so.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion that we award a bid for a Sistern on Elizabeth Avenue to Adler Brothers Construction in the amount of $144,847 and authorize the administrator enter into a contract with them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Harrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Leparo?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm staying. Thank you.
Recused.
For the record, you've authorized it.
Recused, I'm sorry, I used the wrong, wrong word, recused.
You've authorized it, you've already signed?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. What's that tapping? Okay. E, discussion by council voter other action on public works purchase road salt. Mr. Pendergast?
Good evening. Let's see which one is this. In front of you, you should have two agreements for road salt. It's our recommendation that I'd like to have both companies approved. Last year kind of opened our eyes, we didn't have a bad winter, but the company we had was Champion Salt and they ran out of salt in mid-January. Fortunately, last year I had some good advice from someone and we had Morton Salt also approved. So I'm asking again this year to approve Eastern Salt Company for $67 per ton and Morton Salt for $69.15 per ton. That comes out of my operation budget highway. Okay? Anybody have any questions? Mr. Pendergast?
Who's that?
You hear that, CJ? Mouse, mouse in the house? I think the mice on the roof. The salt's not on a ship right now off the coast of California, is it?
Oh, God.
God, I hope not. All right, do we have a motion to approve, Mr. Pendergast's request?
So move.
Mr. President? Is that a, is that a motion?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second motion to approve the $67 for Eastern Salt Company and $69.15 for Morton Salt. We have a motion and we do have a second on that.
Just state for the record that the one from Eastern Salt Company is coming off of a master price agreement with the town of Exeter, or we're backing up on their bid, piggybacking their bid. And the one with Morton Salt is from a state MPA number 125.
Okay. Just make note of that. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Mr. Pendergast, just stay there, we're going to move on for you. Discussion by council voter other action on solid waste and recycling collection contract at High Rocks.
This actually, well, first off, what I'm looking for is authorization for the administrator to sign the, the new amendment to the contract extension, which expires June 30th of '22. In this year's budget, you, the town council, approved an additional $15,000 to pick up the trash at High Rocks. So that's already in the operational budget and approved in June. This...
We did.
We did?
You did.
Yes, it was in the budget. It was a line item, too.
So now, in order for us to pick up High Rocks trash, we already pick up their recycling, I just need, we had to do a new amendment to the extension contract. So I just need your permission for the administrator to sign the contract. Right now, we don't have a contract to pick up at High Rocks.
I didn't know we were to be...
No, no, should we? We, we've had this discussion for like months. And the bottom line is, until the developer goes before the planning board and seeks their approval to change what was given to them to be able to build those condos, it's not in our court. Planning board needs to weigh in on this thing at a request of the developer, which has never happened. We had this discussion and that's why, that's, that's why we went by the wayside.
We've settled that, right? That the High Rocks issue was settled, am I right?
No, it wasn't.
With the low income housing, is that what you're referring to? With the, with the low to moderate income housing?
No.
Oh, okay. I thought that's what you were referring to.
When they went to the planning board, they said, we will be responsible for trash. That was part of the agreement that was made when they got their approval, which lagged on and on and on and on. Unless the developer goes back into the planning board and says, we want to change this, the town is not responsible for picking up their trash. It's part of the agreement. We had this discussion, the solicitor verified it, that the developer has to go back to, to the planning board. We cannot override the planning board's decision with said, High Rocks is responsible for picking up their own trash. This went around and around and around.
Right. And so, and after that discussion, I remember that discussion, I went to the town planner who's not here now, and he advised me, and I'm not going to speak for him, I don't speak for anybody but myself, that that is not true, it does not go back to the planning board, the planning board never voted that into the minutes. There are no minutes that say exactly what you're saying, council. So this is nothing more. I can, I need a contract to coincide with the $15,000 budgeted increase. That's first off. I've held MTG off for picking up the trash. Now, if we want to wait until the new planner comes in and throw this in his lap, we can also do that. But right now, we can table this or move forward. I think everybody's under the impression that the planning board has no authority in this matter, the town council does, because the budget amount for $15,000 was... already approved by you.
I don't agree with that.
I can budget a half a million dollars for a vital least cause, it doesn't mean I have to spend it.
As, as the Finance Director, I do not agree with that statement.
Do you, do you agree that it's in the budget?
I agree that it was in the budget, but I do not agree that if you budget for something and it doesn't go through the proper channels, we spend the money. That's not the way your budget works.
I understand, that's, I agree.
I don't think anybody's saying that.
Okay.
I think what we're saying here is you had an opinion from the town planner.
No, I just wanted to, I don't, the town planner, that has nothing to do with me.
I, I agree with you. I agree with budgets. But what I also have is an opinion from the person who's not here anymore, who said that this does not go back to the planning board. I'm not the planner.
The solicitor had, had told us, correct me if I'm wrong, David, that this was part, the developer said, it never had to be the planning board that said you have to do A, B, C, and D. The developer, as part of his proposal, said, "We are responsible for snow plowing, trash pickup, dah, 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 dah." And then the planning board put other stipulations in place. We cannot override those. That's what we're doing here. If the developer wants the town to pick up the trash, then let them go to the planning board and say, "We want to amend this deal that we made and, and have it wiped out." That was the advice that we were given. That's why it went by the wayside.
Right.
I still stand, I still stand by that decision that we're in, we're, we're crossing boundaries here.
But have they been picking up the trash?
No.
All they've been doing is recycling because it's mandated by the state. That's the only reason we pick up their recyclables. Correct?
Well, if you're going to go down that argument lane, no, you don't have to pick up the recyclables.
I thought that's why we're doing it, because it was mandated by the state.
Trashy and recycling is mandated, mandated, but both are mandated by the state for curbside pickup. It's a state law. I'm only going by the advice that Mr. Kravitz gave months ago.
I understand.
I have no problem. I mean, it's been off since July first. We can table this to get the advice of the new planner and, and move there and get the advice of the planning board, who supposedly Kravitz talked to and says, "It's not in their ball, it's not in their court." I just want to know which one way to go. I get calls to pick up the trash or not. That's all I want to know. So if you want to.
I really don't care what the planner says. I look at my solicitor. He's the one that advises us.
Correct.
And his advice at that time was, the developer needs to go back to the planning board if he wants to amend the deal that was made, which was, he's responsible for trash pickup, snow plowing, dah, 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 dah. All the other stuff, those were other stipulations, the minimal housing, affordable housing, those were all things that the town put into place that, that came through that. We're crossing boundaries. We're, we're in there changing what the planning board approved and we don't have the right to do that. That's basically the advice we were given by the solicitor a year ago, right about this time.
Mr. President, again, I, we'd have to get the minutes on that because I, I, I'm not saying I disagree with the concept that if you want to amend the planning board decision, the planning board is the place to do it. But if the council wants to adopt a budget item to pick up trash, the council has a right to adopt a budget item to pick up trash. So we, I'm not so sure that, that those two are the same. But I, again, we'd have to go back to those minutes. So I don't want to, I don't want to try to have a debate here when I, I don't remember seeing that planning board decision. It's not in front of us. We're debating something. My only memory is at budget time, there was a lot of discussion during the public hearing about whether or not council was going to do this, and they ended up putting an item in the budget to do it. So this is the execution of your policy decision at the time of your budget. That's what I think the director's saying. But again, I don't want, it, it's hard for us to have this discussion if we don't have the planning board decision in front of us in the minutes, so that we're not, I think we should have the minutes of the council meeting that approved the budget, the planning board decision, and the minutes that Mr. Vaden is talking, Councilman Vaden is talking about, to make sure that it's clear. So I don't want, it's not about disputing anybody, it's about being clear on what was said. And maybe it's what, maybe the real issue is, the council hasn't made that policy decision. If they have, then this is the execution of it. If they haven't, then Mr. Pendigast is asking you to decide one way or the other, either what Mr. Vaden is indicating or pay the fee anyway. I, I don't have that decision.
When would that process begin, if it hasn't started yet? When would they begin at the pickup?
They'll, they'll begin when, when I feel I have the authorization from the council to amend the contract extension, which I do not have at this time. So I guess, so they're not, we're not going to play volleyball tonight. How about we do this? Let's table it, refer this back to the planner, advise the planner to seek counsel from the planning board and move forward with this. So we're not discussing this every time this comes up, it's the same talk back and forth. But nobody produces any paperwork to prove that the planning board did in fact vote on this way back when. I've never seen that paperwork.
But we don't, we don't need the planning board to, to make this decision.
Mr. President, that's, that's a point of contention. So I, I would just suggest, if you want, we'll get the planning board decision, we'll get the minutes, and we'll, we'll have an informed discussion. If, if, if the director can wait until next meeting.
I can wait.
Um, we'll, we'll get that.
Will the next meeting be enough time?
Yes. I can't, I can't believe the planning board decision is that difficult.
Nobody even enough time to gather all the, the minutes and all that stuff?
If it isn't, then, then I'll report back to the council that I need more time.
Okay. All right. Joanne, you got that?
M.T.G. is on the contract, though. We've already, we've already extended their contract. This is an amendment to that extension that we did in July.
Correct. Right. This, this, um, this puts into this amendment, uh, the picking up of the trash at High Rocks. So if we, we can, we can hold back on, yeah, we still have the Second Amendment in place.
And, and, Mr. President, members of the council, I, I wasn't aware this was still a point of contention, otherwise I would have done that before tonight.
I understand. Okay, so no action on that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move back up to old business. Discussion by council voter other action on municipal building review task force. Mr. Nostrum, you good? After. Yeah. Okay. Discussion by council voter other action on update of Hallwell Review Committee. Mr. Corvo?
Yes. Don't really have much to, to update based on our last meeting, but I do see that our chairman, Jeff Porter, is here, so I'd like to call him up and discuss item number one, request for proposal for the engineering services for hazard materials testing and documentation.
Well, since we're going to do that, well, Mr. Porter will also go, or move right to B, discussion by council voter other action on Weston and Sampson. So you can just roll right into that when you.
Sure.
Okay.
I did want to touch base on a, a few things following up with Steve's update. At our last meeting, we also had requested that we send some clarification back to the council. We had reviewed the resolution once again and just to kind of as a reminder of what our duties were set forth with. And we had the questions of, particularly items A, review the public facility needs of the town, and item C, review all existing public facilities improvement plans as accepted by the town council. So we were just curious if there were other additional materials that we needed to be looking for and requesting, so that we could disseminate that amongst our committee. And we would just be looking for some additional guidance if there was anything that we would need to be looking at any further. And then, um, one of the other requests, Vice Chairman Chris Simkins and I had a conversation with the representatives from Weston and Sampson in trying to get them to move along and also determine a final timeline for their report and their presentation. So we were looking at November twenty-ninth for us to receive their final report. At our December second meeting, we'd be reviewing and hopefully recommending to town council their final report. And then we were hoping that we could have a, similar to the N.B.R.T.F., a special meeting on the Monday, December thirteenth, as a joint meeting with council and the Hallwell Review Committees, so Weston and Sampson could make their presentation at that time. Essentially, we, we have had Weston and Sampson working for that as their, as their deadline.
What, have they been, is Weston and Sampson, has Weston and Sampson been living up to their end of the, the contract?
Yeah. They, they've needed a little fire and a little pushing along, but, um, as it is in the architectural and engineering world, things are actually really fairly crazy right now. I, myself, at my own job, have fourteen jobs that I'm overseeing. So trying to get things along as, as quickly as we can is somewhat a difficult task, but still doable.
They have a year to do their project.
I'm sorry?
They have a year to do their project.
That's, yeah, that's correct, too.
And, and we delay them. We delay them with the signing of the contract. They were ready to start at the beginning of the year.
But essentially now, you know, we're here in December and, you know, they're, they're ten feet from the finish line at this point. So they're wrapping up their reports and crossing the Ts and dotting their Is. So that would, that would be just one request, if, if we could get that on the books for, for December thirteenth and finalize that tonight, so then I can report back to Weston and Sampson, so, so they can be sure to have their appropriate teammate, uh, team members attending that meeting.
Was that, thirteenth is a what, a Monday?
It's a Monday, yes.
Does anybody have any issues with that day? I know that, you don't begin that by the point. Okay. All right. You want to, everybody agree to, uh, December thirteenth? Nobody has any conflicts?
Mm-hmm.
All right. We'll go with that.
All right. Great. Thank you.
December thirteenth.
Okay. Then the, the, the next item that was on your agenda was the hazardous materials. One of the items that we as a committee feel that needs to happen regardless of what happens to the existing buildings demolished or renovated, needs to, the hazardous materials need to be tested for and an abatement plan needs to be written. This was one thing that we felt that was going to be under the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold for state bidding laws, so we were going to defer to the solicitor and the finance director, whether they wanted to go through the master price agreement or go out through the request for proposals. So that, that, that's, that's going to be clearly a, a decision upon Cynthia and, and the solicitor as, as they move forward. But I would like to, I did, uh, we did write a draft RFP. It states that we wanted to test all the buildings, make sure, Weston and Sampson, I attached in, in this letter to, to all of you, Weston and Sampson recommended testing all those materials. And we did, uh, agree as a committee that we should also test all eleven of the buildings to make sure that each building is treated appropriately. So we would just look for movement on that. That, that, like I said, that needs to get done regardless of whatever happens with the property.
Let me ask you a question and, and, Mr. Vaden, feel free to chime in because this is your area of expertise. Had we never left that building, right? Because this was brought up tonight, and I thought about this when I was trying to get the seniors in there. Had we never left that building and we continued using it after the school moved out, would we, we could still, we would still be in there or no?
Once you, once you stop, cease using it as a school, the use changes.
Okay.
Once the use changes, you need to bring the whole building up to current standard codes.
Okay.
So as long as it was being used as a school, you're okay, similar to the police station. As long as they keep using it as a police station, even though the new standards don't even come close to what, or the old standards aren't close, they're still okay because you haven't changed the use of the building. When you change the use of building, we changed the use of this building to an office building, we had to change and update the code when we did this building.
So we couldn't have said, "It's a school and tomorrow's the senior center."
Bring it up to code.
Okay.
Bring it up to code. And this is, this is just a report, this, we already have the, have our reports that were done when it was a school, they're done on a, by annual basis or something, have the reports?
Um, I believe the last reports that we have were completed in two thousand and seven.
But they're done like every two years. You have to have them for, for public buildings, however, it's an asbestos reporting thing and they keep monitoring it.
So, so.
So, it, the, the report is, is, has value to it because we're going to need to know where there's asbestos in that building, what hazardous materials in the building, so we'll know how to remediate them when the time comes.
Yep. So we, we could go off state, the statewide sheet for that?
Master price.
Master price. Can we go off the master price agreement for that?
Because of the twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, but given my, uh, some of the projects I've been working on, I've been led to believe that this process of testing everything would likely be under the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold.
Twenty-five thousand.
I would say probably between, anywhere between five and, and ten, ten on the higher end, but.
Okay. Okay. So, uh, what do you need from us then? Just to vote to approve the, going through the, go through that process or?
Even if I went through the M.P.A., I'm not, I'm not specialized in that field, so I would need Mr. Porter's help to figure out who to pick, because I don't know anything about hazardous materials or anything like that.
There should be a list, right?
Yeah.
There's a list.
Yeah.
But then, yeah, but then we would have to contact them for a price and I would need the specs to contact.
So why don't you go ahead, get, figure that out?
And here he gave me the RFP, so.
What's that?
No, he, you, you gave me the RFP. Those have the specs in them, right?
Right, right. Yep. I've, I've sent the draft over to the, the finance director as well.
Okay. So why don't you go ahead, figure that out?
Mm-hmm.
And then you can come back, what, you come back, have to come back to us for a vote and we'll approve it?
Okay.
Perfect.
Just, Mr. President, just kind of to refresh everyone's memory, back in July, we received a report from Environmental Consulting Management. It was a cooperation, Mr. Pendigast set it up through the inter-local trust. They went into building ten, looking for mold spores and other, we know there's asbestos there, that goes without question because of tiles. But I think every council member received this on, on building ten. Every member of the Hallwell Committee received the report on building ten. So when we start to look at costs on this, we really wouldn't have to do air quality in building ten. We know what's there as of July. We know, kind of knew what was there two years ago, so nothing really changes. Maybe the levels will change.
But this is, this is not necessarily air quality?
No, I know.
They're actually, they're actually testing.
I got it. I know. But I'm just saying that that part of it can be omitted when it comes to cost.
Yeah. This, this would only be in reference to asbestos-containing materials.
Yeah.
Not mold.
Okay.
Because that was one of the issues that we had when we had the contract with Weston and Sampson about, they said that they weren't, they weren't responsible for it, and it was like, "I want that in the report. I want you guys to tell us that, that, you know, I, I expected that to be part of their report." Not necessarily how to remediate it, but where it was and where, and they do, they do have it in their report. They do have it in their report.
Yeah. Yeah, and then one of the other things that I did include in the RFP is just including costs to get, be associated with it for remediation. So then that way we start to get an idea of what kind of cost would be associated with, with it. Because again, like I said, we have to do this one way or another, so it will be a good baseline to start with.
We had done some preliminary work, not, not, not as a council or a board, but Gary and I had done some preliminary work on this, just getting ballpark figures, and they were looking at about forty grand a pod demolition.
Okay.
That's it? Was that American? We're going to go back and try and find those files. Yeah, we'll take this off line between you and I, okay.
All right, so you're going to reach out to her?
Yep.
And then come back to us when you guys figure it out and then we'll approve.
Yep.
Or not approve.
Perfect, that'd be great, thank you. And then I can continue to stay up here for the invoice.
So we're going to move on to, we're going to move on to discussion by council vote of other action on Weston and Sampson engineers' payment of invoice.
So on what you have before you are two invoices, I believe they're one for our July and one for August. What we are recommending is that we hold back about $1,243.50 for the meetings portion. They have billed out 100% at that, at this time, and they still need to show up before town council, so we were reserving that monies to cover their visit and presentation to you folks.
Well, they have two, two meetings with us.
They do, but the, they've come to the Halliwell Review Committee five times, so they were owed four. And then they've, we've also had, when, when Tom was here, we had the two staff meetings with Tom and Weston and Sampson, so we're really down to, in totality, we're down to seven out of eight meetings at this point.
Is that, is that number an arbitrary number, that 1,000, like where do you, where do you?
No, what I did is I essentially, or the committee essentially took that number, divided it by eight meetings and held a little extra just for motivation.
Yeah, because that doesn't seem like, if they don't want to do it, they might be like, you can have the thousand dollars. It's not really motivation to get them to come and fulfill their obligation.
I think it will be. I think in, when Chris and I had our Zoom meeting with Weston and Sampson, they were, they're ready to get this wrapped up and out the door, so.
All right.
So it's the Halliwell Review Committee's recommendation that we, we approve invoice for July, invoice number two of 27, 785, and invoice number three in August of 12,535? Or is the number different?
No, the, on the letter, the numbers are slightly different. For the July invoice, invoice number eight, yeah, 8210933, we request that the amount be 26,541.50.
Yeah, that's what you have in the letter.
And then the August invoice, that one is, can be paid in full.
And the, that's for the 12,000?
Yes.
And how much are you holding back?
Right now, the, the additional remainder, let's see, is outstanding right now is 29,640.
But how much are you holding back for the, for the meeting?
And we're, we would hold back 1,243.50 for the meetings.
There were still some big issues that they haven't completed.
Yeah, I don't see them, I don't see that being motivation to come back.
Well, they still owe us, they still owe us a lot of stuff. We still owe them a lot of money. We still owe them 29,000 and they owe us a number of issues. Property research, the wetlands delineation, the utilities and roadway assessment, the report and conceptual alternatives, they haven't completed any of those things.
Yeah, if you look at the memo from Carolyn Wells dated September 28th, that gives you the percentage complete. So there's still, you know, that 29,640, that's still outstanding. And there are only six, it's listed that, that there's 65% complete for the whole project in its entirety.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we, based on the recommendation of the Halliwell Review Committee, that we approve the invoice number 8210933 in the amount of 26,541.50. Invoice number 9211036 in the amount of 12,535.35 to Weston and Sampson, as well as amend their contract to remove the clause 2.1.4 that was in, that was for property.
Market analysis.
Market analysis, and that would be a savings of 8,550.
Do we have a second? A discussion. Why are we paying, it's a lot of money we're paying them if they're not done, only because I, I, in my, I mean, my business is very tiny, but I just can't imagine not finishing and expecting to get paid.
I fully expect that they're going to be finishing their report. They would, it would be very surprising if a consultant for this town comes forward and says, okay, we've been paid to this part, we're going, we're just going to leave, leave and be done. That, that would mean there's a lot of additional litigation that would be going into this. There would be breach of contract, and I think on both of our ends, if we're refusing payment, I believe that's, that's grounds for a breach of contract with them because they have completed these tasks, with the exception of the meetings. So in my, my professional opinion, you know, we've been having ongoing conversations to make sure that we get what we are expecting to get based on the contract, it's just taking a little bit longer for them to move.
Longer than you'd like.
Longer than we'd like.
But within the terms of the contract.
Within the terms of the contract, but understanding that we are extremely motivated to move forward, so. And we've also had schedules put out that says that they're going to complete the work within four months. So the, the level of expectations has been fluctuating a little bit. But I think based on our call, we've come to an understanding to really wrap things up and get things finalized.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. No.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks. Richard, what are you doing here? I know. That's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to go back. For tax credit, historic tax credit? All right, come on up. New business, discussion by council vote of other action on amendment to Code of Ordinances, Chapter Six, Article One, Section 6-3.13 entitled Historic Residence Tax Credit. We had, Mr. Gliozzi, if I'm correct, we had, we discussed this previous, correct? And we had to go to the state to get permission to do this, and now you're coming back and you're saying we have permission to do this.
Correct.
Okay, so go ahead.
Okay, once again, Rich King, Second Banfield Street, also the president of the North Smithfield Heritage Association. Unfortunately, Jeff Harris couldn't be here tonight because of the previous commitment. He's the chairman of the Historic District Commission and has to, has to, I speak, favor this. So, and as, as you explained, this is the town council passed the tax credit, historic building tax credit ordinance a year ago. But we were required to limit the ordinance to what was in the state enabling legislation at the time. So you put the, the ordinance in place and at the time, currently now, the program is established, although we don't, we haven't set up the rules and regulations for it, but it is an official ordinance, but it's, it's supposed to be run by the Rhode Island Historic Preservation Commission and the Tax Assessor. And so we went back with a resolution from the town council asking the legislature to amend the enabling laws for the provisions that are before you tonight. So it would give the Historic District Commission, make them the authority having jurisdiction rather than the State Historic Preservation Commission. It also includes other buildings besides just historic residences. For example, for a farm, the outlined buildings would be included so that.
Barns, silos.
Barns, exactly. So, so anyway, you've got the proposed revisions, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So the revisions, just so we're clear, are the highlighted in blue?
Yes.
And we more or less mirrored what they do in Bristol. Bristol, Bristol had already gone through that process of changing so that their historic buildings, Bristol would control that, that what goes on with them. And so we got the enabling, like, like Mr. King said, we got the legislation, but it had to follow Rhode Island Historic Preservation. And then once that got passed, we could put in an enabling legislation and say, no, we want it on the North Smithfields. After, it's a two-step process.
Okay.
This is the second step of it now that we've got it in place.
Okay.
And so now we've got the enabling legislation, it's been passed. Now we need to enact it into our ordinance.
So this will be a first reading?
Yep.
No, this, this is, Mr. President, I believe the first reading was intended, wasn't it?
No.
No, this is the first reading.
Okay, I'm sorry, first reading?
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. King? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the amendment?
You don't, it just presented as first reading.
Oh, you don't want, oh, you're right, I apologize.
You just got to.
You're right.
Just first reading.
Okay.
Then we have a public hearing and then, and then we can do second.
Okay, my bad. Go in, we'll set up a, put that back on the agenda, set up a second reading and a public hearing.
Mr. President, in this particular case, I would, I would just suggest that you put the public hearing and the vote discussion of the action second reading on the same day. Instead of separating them. I know the clerk had asked that today.
That was my intention.
And it has to be a posted public hearing, correct? Because we're changing an ordinance.
Exactly. Well, this particular type of ordinance.
Right.
We jumped all over the place so much. Miss anything on the front page? Go in. So you want to give us a date on that?
Probably the first meeting in December.
Yeah, I think you need, I would have to check.
Because you got to, you got to post it for 10 days.
We'll put them on the next available date.
We good? Okay. Okay, we didn't, on the new business C, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'd like to ask your indulgence.
Yep.
I should have done this under, under open forum, but I'd like to introduce Mr. John Hill, who is, who is authoring the 150th Anniversary History in the town of North Smithfield. So you'll get his, we'll see his bill later in the vicinity of welcome.
We had something to write about earlier tonight, right?
But after you adjourn tonight, could I ask that you remain in your seats so I can take a picture for the history book? Are you going to memorialize your?
Sure.
And that would go for the, the folks sitting at the, with the other table as well, if you, if you would.
There's a football game on tonight.
It's not a good one, though.
They're all good. Okay, so we're going to move on to new business C, discussion by council vote of other action on payment of invoice regarding North Smithfield School Department.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the invoice to Stephen Turner, Inc., dated 4/30/21, invoice number 3623, in the amount of 1,800. It has all the appropriate sign-offs.
That's a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, I'm sorry.
I just have a question.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering why we're getting an invoice that's dated back from April 30th?
There's been ongoing with this project, that paperwork, paperwork lagged behind.
This has been a concern, Ms. Al, for years.
Concern of mine, a concern of, of Mr. Jesus.
I told him, this really affects me. It was immaterial, but I did ask the auditor if this was going to affect my audit because it was so late. And she said it was immaterial, but they do this to me all the time. And I've been talking to them about it, but.
Sometimes they're more concerned with getting the work done than, than the paperwork trail.
If you see, it's not approved from them until October, so I don't know who held on to the invoice for that long.
So did they actually receive the invoice back in April or is this company just back dating it?
I'm not, I don't know.
Well, it's definitely on their part because they dated it, but all the people that signed it, signed it.
In October.
In October. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. Discussion by council vote of other action on penalties, tax adjustments, Mr. Jesus?
These are adjustments that were brought to my attention with the current collection letters that went out. I'm asking the council to adjust penalties in the amount of 2,157.33.
Mr. President, based on the recommendation of the finance director, I recommend we approve the penalty adjustments of 2,157.33.
We have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Mr. President, I'm asking the town council to approve tax adjustments for quite, about four deceased taxpayers in the amount of 2,295.73.
Mr. President?
Ms. Al.
I'd like to make a motion to approve tax adjustments per the finance director in the amount of 2,295.73.
Wait a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Just, just under, under discussion, this is actually a negative number, this is actually a negative number now, right? We're, we're doing away with this now, we're pulling them, we're not, we're like, writing it off as bad debt.
Correct.
Correct.
We have a motion and a second on that, roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Discussion by council vote of other action on tax upgrade statement. Mr. Jesus?
This is an upgrade that was approved actually last fiscal year as a capital item, but we had put 50,000 in cap. Did something happen? Keep talking? Okay, testing. We had put in capital last fiscal year 50,000 and this year we've put 56,000 for the upgrade of Vision software, which is our tax collection software, our UTB software, which is, which is our utilities, which is water and sewer, and also our Vision Tax Assessor Administration software. They are giving us a 15% discount, so it's only going to be 90,525. I'm asking permission for the town administrator to sign the statement of work agreement that is before you. If I send it in before the end of the month, then we'll, we'll be allowed that 15% discount and they are coming out next week to show us the new software.
What's the total amount?
Yeah, I don't see.
Well, you get, it's 20% and 50% and 30%. What's that total amount?
I'm sorry, it comes up to 90,525.
That includes our discount?
Yes, it was 106,500 that we put aside in capital for this upgrade. And it's actually an upgrade, it's, we didn't really have a choice unfortunately.
It's not new software.
Right, once they upgrade, they won't maintain the old, this is more cloud-based and more up to date.
It's a big discount, 15%. Take that any day.
Well, they got you stuck, it's software that you're using and you can't, there's really nothing else out there.
We can't do any.
There's really nothing else out there, you have to, you have to get the upgrade.
We can get, yeah, we can go with another software, but to start all over, it's going to be more costly.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we award to Vision Government Solutions a Vision tax upgrade in the amount of 90,525 and authorize the administrator to sign.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Al? Yes.
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 Yes. A discussion by council vote of other action on location of safe warm shelter during winter power outages. I ask this to be put on the agenda as a result of the nor'easter we just had, thinking if this had been a couple of months later, then it could have been a real nasty storm. We could have lost a lot of, a lot of people could have lost power and they wouldn't know where to go. I would talk with Jim Lombardi about this at length and we are going to, we want to set up, work with the school, school department, and we want to make sure that everybody is aware, that, we work with EMA also, that everybody's aware that we have a shelter. He's going to figure out whether it's going to be at the high school or the, or the middle school, but we, there has to be a shelter in the event people lose power, for people to have a warm shower, a warm place to stay and a hot meal. It's for town residents, it's not for people that just come to the shelter, but it's for town residents who lose power and are in need of, in need of shelter for, for a short period of time.
I believe it's already set up that the high school is a shelter.
But we don't, nobody knows, right? But nobody knows about it.
No, it's a matter of publicizing it.
Exactly.
And actually, when we did the construction of this building, this room could be a warm shelter as well.
But the good part about being at the high school or the middle school is they can take a shower as well, so. And have food, and they have a cafeteria. So he's going to work on his end, we're going to work on ours. to work on our end with EMA, and we're going to establish, I mean, like you said, it is technically there, but we're going to make it official and that everybody knows about it. So no action needs to be taken, it's just something that I'm working on with Jim Lombardi that everybody should be aware of and the public should be aware of. Discussion by council, what are other action on moving town council meetings on January 3rd and February 7th due to North Smithfield Ski Club. I'm sorry? All right, we'll go back since I already read all that. So, Mr. Carvo, you wanted to, you're, you're still running the ski club?
Yes.
And we, there's a couple of dates that you're, you're conflicting with, and we just asked them to move January 3rd and February 7th to... Are those the dates you want moved or moved to? What do we?
Uh, those are the, those are the dates that we have, town council. Let me just pull up those dates on my calendar. So, January 3rd, we have a town council meeting. I'd be looking to have town council, if they agree, to move it to Tuesday the 4th, so still keeping it the first of the week. And then the 17th is not affected, because that's a, that's a holiday. And then I'd be looking at, again, the first Monday of February, which is February 7th, moving it to Tuesday, February 8th. And just to, just to kind of bring you up to speed, so this is the, this is the eighth year that I've been running this in town. Last year, it was probably the only extracurricular sport that a lot of the kids participated in, and even with that, we had just over 100 students ranging from 6th grade to 12th grade, along with 11 parental volunteers, chaperones. We go to Wachusett every Monday. The bus, we rent two coach buses, they pick up the students and the chaperones at the middle school, and we go from about 3 o'clock in the afternoon until about 9 o'clock at night each Monday for six consecutive Mondays, as long as they don't fall on holidays or school vacation. So with that being said, town council agreed to move it last year, and I'd be looking to have them move it this upcoming year.
I have a conflict on the 4th.
Okay.
Would we even have a meeting on the 3rd? Wouldn't, would that be New Year's Day? So would we be celebrating New Year's, because it's on Saturday, so would we actually have a meeting on that Monday, or will we, or would it go to Tuesday?
Sometimes when they're on, sometimes when they're on Saturday, they celebrate them on Friday.
So you have a conflict on...
I have a conflict on...
January 4th?
On the 4th.
Okay.
I can't make...
All right, so how about if we, we can pretty much move the meeting wherever we agree to, correct?
Yep.
So does anybody have a problem with the 5th? No? Okay, we'll do the 5th. Get the kids to, to Wachusett.
Is that a Wednesday?
It's now a Wednesday, yeah.
And I just want to confirm that Monday is Martin Luther King, a holiday. I'm assuming our town council meeting will be on the 18th, that following Tuesday?
Correct.
Okay.
And how's like February, it comes on President's Day, and it's on Tuesday following month.
So then the only other conflict, as it states, is Monday, February 7th, moving it from Monday, the 7th, to Tuesday, the 8th.
Does anybody have a conflict with that?
Not right now.
Okay, Joanne, we're going to put that down for now. Okay, great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Discussion by council, what are other action on town of North Smithfield, strong recommendation to school district, an immediate withholding of RIASC membership dues. Mr. Carvo, you wanted this on the agenda?
I did, so, you know, a lot has transpired. I just want to thank the council members for reviewing the enclosed information on the resolution that was set before you tonight in the packets. I would expect that there would be possible discussion, but ultimately I am looking for an action this evening on this in the form of a vote on what I consider to be an extremely important matter that would inevitably affect our families as well as all the taxpayers in this town of North Smithfield. Before, before we start into breaking down on the resolution, I'd like to just bring your attention and bring you up to speed on what trends, what has transpired since September 29th, 2021. Please take a few minutes to watch this video.
... policies and attack Republican-led state actions and erode constitutional norms. The most of Americans are deeply concerned today that instead of addressing the most pressing issues facing our country, we're watching the Biden Garland Justice Department be weaponized, that you are using your authorities now to advance far-left policies and attack Republican-led state actions and erode constitutional norms. The most recent case in point has been brought up this morning, your memorandum directing the FBI and other Department of Justice officials to get involved in local school board debates. It concerns us that it was issued just five days after the National School Board Association sent a letter to President Biden, which referred to concerned parents as the equivalent of, quote, "domestic terrorists and perpetrators of hate crimes," unquote. Given the timing of all this, your memo appears to have been motivated by politics more than any pressing federal law enforcement need. This is concerning to us, and it's worthy of investigation. It also concerns us that your actions may have been motivated by your family's financial stake in this issue. Published reports so that, show that your son-in-law co-founded a company called Panorama Education. We now know that that company publishes and sells critical race theory and so-called anti-racism materials to schools across the country, and it works with school districts nationwide to obtain and analyze data on students, often without parental consent. On its website, the company brags that it surveyed more than 13 million students in the U.S. It's raised $76 million from powerful investors, including people like Mark Zuckerberg, just since 2017. My first question is this: Are you familiar with Title V of the Code of Federal Regulations, which addresses the rules of impartiality for executive branch employees and officials?
I am very familiar with it, and I want to be clear once again that there's nothing in this memorandum which has any effect on the kinds of curriculums that are taught or the ability of parents to complain about the kinds of...
I understand your position on, on the free speech of parents.
Not a position, it is...
Wait, wait just a minute. The question is, the question is, the thing that has concerned many of those parents that are showing up at these school board meetings, the, the very basis of their objection and their vigorous debate, as you mentioned earlier, is the curricula, the very curricula that your son-in-law is selling. So to millions of Americans, I mean, my constituents, I was home all weekend, I got an earful about this, they're very concerned about that. Subpart E of that federal regulation says an employee of the executive branch is discouraged from encouraging, engaging in conduct that's likely to affect the financial interest of someone close to them. Your, your son-in-law, your daughter, clearly meets that definition. And, and so the question is, did, did you follow that regulation? Did you have the appropriate agency ethic official look into this? Did you seek guidance as the federal regulation requires?
This memorandum is aimed at violence and threats of violence.
Understand that, but did you, excuse me, did you seek ethics counsel before you issued a letter that directly relates to the financial interest of your family? Yes or no?
This memorandum does not relate to the financial interests of anyone. It's a threat against...
I take that as a no. I take that as a no.
Memorandum is against violence and threats of violence. I don't know.
Will you, Mr. Attorney General, will you commit to having the appropriate ethics designated review the case and make the results public?
This memorandum is aimed at violence and threats of violence.
I understand your talking point, you're not answering my question, Mr. Attorney General. With all due respect, will you submit to an ethics review of this matter, yes or no?
There's no company in America, or hopefully no law-abiding citizen in America, who believes that threats of violence should not be prevented. There are no conflicts of interest that anyone could have.
According to you, but sir, with due respect, that's the purpose of the federal regulation. We need objective third parties to review our activities. You don't get to make that decision yourself. It doesn't matter. You're the top, you're the chief law enforcement of this country. This raises questions in the minds of millions of Americans, and your impartiality is being called into question. Why would you not submit to a simple ethics review of that?
I am exquisitely aware of the ethics requirements.
But you're not following them.
I have followed them and lived with them for the last 25 years.
Did you seek an ethics review of this or not?
I want to say again, there are no conflicts of interest involved when the Justice Department...
Okay, okay, according to you, I got that. I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but you are not respecting our rules, our constitutional norms, and the federal law that directly applies to your activities. This is a great concern. This is why people are losing faith in our institutions? They're losing faith in this Department of Justice? And you and I both know, as constitutional attorneys, that if, if the people lose their faith in our system of justice, if they lose their faith in the idea that justice is blind, that there are not two standards, that there's one standard of the law, and that everybody...
Time of the general...
Eighty-five later, the Department of Justice challenges it. September 1st, Joe Biden criticizes the new pro-life law in Texas. Eight days later, the Department of Justice challenges it. September 29th, the political organization asks President Biden to involve the FBI in local school board issues. Five days later, the Department of Justice does just that. Mr. Attorney General, was it just a coincidence that your memo came five days after the National School Boards Association letter went to the president?
So we are concerned about violence and threats of violence across the board against school officials, against...
Is there any connection, Mr. Attorney General, with the school board letter, and then five days later, your memo to, regarding school board issues?
Obviously, the letter, which was public and asked for assistance from the Justice Department, was brought to our attention, and it's a relevant factor in...
Gave you the letter?
I'm sorry?
How'd you become aware of the letter? Who gave it to you?
I read about the letter in the news. That's how I read about it.
What the White House told you to write the memo?
No one in the White House spoke to me about the memo at all, but I, I am sure, I was, at least I certainly would believe that the White House communicated its concerns about the letter to the Justice Department, and that is perfectly...
Oh, that was my next question. Did you or anyone at the Justice Department discuss the memo with White House personnel or with anyone at the White House before the memo was sent?
I did not. I don't know whether anyone discussed the memo. I am sure that the communication from the National Association of School Boards was discussed between, between the White House and the Justice Department, and that's perfectly appropriate, just as...
Who were those individuals? Who at the White House talked with? Who at the Justice Department?
I don't know. I don't know.
Did they talk to you? Did someone call you?
I think I've answered. No one from the White House spoke to me, but the White House is perfectly appropriately concerned about violence, just like they're concerned about violence in the streets, and they make requests of the Justice Department in that respect, just like they're concerned about...
Did you or anyone at the Department of Justice communicate with the American Federation of Teachers, the National Education Association, or the National School Boards Association prior to your memo?
I did not. I don't know.
Don't know if anyone else at the Justice Department did?
I don't know.
You know, if, did, did you or anyone at the Justice Department communicate with those, those organizations, AFT, NEA, National School Board Association, prior to the letter? Did you help the National School Board Association put together the letter?
Again, not. I, I have had no such conversations. I would be surprised if, if that happened, but I don't know.
Will FBI agents be attending local school board meetings?
No, FBI agents will not be attending local school boards meetings, and there's nothing in this memo to suggest that. I want to, again, try to be clear, this memo is about violence and threats of violence.
Well, let me just point out, the same day you did the memo, the Justice Department sent out a press release, Monday, October 24, or, excuse me, Monday, October 4th, 2021. The press release says, "Justice Department Addresses Violent Threats Against School Officials and Teachers." Now, you said earlier to a question from one of my colleagues on the Republican side, that parents aren't domestic terrorists, we're not going to treat them that way, but let me just read from the third paragraph. According to the Attorney General's memorandum, the Justice Department will launch a series of additional efforts in the coming days designed to address the rising criminal conduct directed towards school personnel. Those efforts are extended, expected to include a creation of a task force consisting of representatives from the Department's Criminal Division, Civil Rights Division, Executive Office of U.S. Attorneys, the FBI, the Community Relations Service, Office of Justice Programs, and the National Security Division. Now, I find that interesting. You said there's no way you're going to be treating parents as domestic terrorists, but you got the National Security Division in a press release regarding your memo that day.
My memo does not mention the National Security Division. It's addressed...
I didn't say it did. I said the press release accompanying your memo that day from the Department of Justice, right here it is.
I want to be as clear as I can be. This is not... I want to be clear as I can be. This is not about what happens in Skye's school board meetings. It's only about threats of violence and violence aimed at school officials, school employees, and teachers.
First sentence of your memo, very first sentence, you said, "In recent months, there's been a disturbing spike in harassment, intimidation, threats of violence."
Yes.
When did you first review the data showing this so-called disturbing uptick?
So I read the letter, and we have been seeing over time threats...
Whoa, 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 I didn't ask you, so you read the letter, that's, that's your source?
So let me be clear, this is not a prosecution or an investigation.
Is there some study, some effort, some investigation someone did that said there's been a disturbing uptick, or you just take the words of the National School Board Association?
Well, the National School Board Association, which represents thousands of school boards and school board members, says that there are these kind of threats. When we read in the newspapers reports of threats of violence, when that is in the context of threats of violence against all...
The source for this, for the very first line in your, in your...
Time of the gentleman has expired.
Was the School Board Association letter.
Time of the gentleman has expired, Mr. Deitch.
All right, Mr. Carvo, you got the floor?
So, as you can see watching, watching this clip, on September 29th, the NSBA, the National School Boards Association, submitted a letter to the Biden administration indicating, and I'll read the... Okay. So on September 29th, the NSBA, the National School Boards Association, submitted a letter to the Biden administration indicating, with the title, "Federal Assistance to Stop Threats and Acts of Violence Against Public Schoolchildren, Public School Board Members, and Other Public School District Officials and Educators." And then it goes on in the body of the email addressing the president, "America's public schools and education leaders are under an immediate threat. NSBA believes immediate assistance is required to protect our children, school board, school board members, and educators who are susceptible to acts of violence affecting interstate commerce because of threats to their districts, families, and personal safety. NSBA respectfully asks that a joint collaboration among federal law enforcement agencies, state and law, local law enforcement, and with public school officials be undertaken to focus on these threats. NSBA specifically solicits the expertise and resources of the U.S. Department of Justice, the Federal Bureau of Investigations, the FBI, U.S. Department of Homeland Security, U.S. Secret Service, and its National Threat Assessment Center regarding the level of risk to public schoolchildren, educators, board members, and facilities and campuses. We also request the assistance of the U.S. Postal Inspection Service to intervene against threatening letters and cyberbullying attacks that have been transmitted to students, school board members, district administrators, and other educators." And it goes on and says, "As these acts of malice, violence, and threats against public..." And it goes on and says, "As these acts of malice, violence, and threats against public school officials have increased, the classification of these heinous actions could be the equivalent to form a domestic terrorism and hate crimes. As such, NSBA requests a joint expedited review of the U.S. Department of Justice, education, and homeland security, along with the appropriate training, coordination, investigations, and enforcement mechanisms from the FBI, including any technical assistance necessary and state and local coordination with its National Security Breach and Counterterrorism Division, as well as any other federal agency with relevant jurisdictional authority and oversight." Quite honestly, I, when I first heard this a little over a week ago, I couldn't even believe that it would be bringing this up on a local level in the first place. The fact that we'd be looking at protecting our taxpaying residents and family members and equating them to a form of domestic terrorism and a hate crime, I just think was, was asinine. The fact that this should be involved, that this should involve our, our action at the local level, actions that have taken place since September 29th, from what I've seen, is really only four steps away from our front door. And I'll recap. So on September 29th, the NSBA sends a letter to the Biden administration. The U.S. Attorney General and the Department of Justice sends out a response memo and letter, both of which are public documents. Then state organizations then decide if they will comply or take a stand against this action, of which I'll remind you, there's 50 states. As of today, 23 state agency members have taken steps to remove themselves from the NSBA until further notice. To break that down, that's 46%. What would our school district do if 46% of families decided to homeschool their children or send them to private school? I would imagine it'd be detrimental to our district. 27 state agency members have either avoided it like the plague, or, as we've seen, have agreed with the NSBA and have done so in full force. I present to you the RIAASC, Rhode Island Association of School Committees. The executive director in an email dated October 5th, just six days after NSBA's request to the Biden administration, wrote an internal email to its board of directors with the following. With a subject title dated October 5th, 2021, at 8:18 a.m., the subject Garland Taps FBI in Response to Disturbing Spike and Threats Against Educators. He puts in the body of the email, "Last week, the National School Board Association sent a letter to President Biden decrying the threatening behavior of some public members attending school board meetings. NSBA requested that the president direct the Justice Department and the FBI to reach out to local leaders about ways to address the threatening behavior." And it goes on and says, "RIASC will contact our U.S. Attorney as well as the FBI and coordinate with them on what steps, if any, we need to take. In the interim, please apprise me of any issues you have had during your committee meetings on topics such as mask mandates, issues of equity education, rights of LGBTQ," and the last one is a misprint. It should be B-I-O-P, BIPOC students, which stands for Black, Indigenous, and People of Color. And it's sincerely signed by the executive director. Please hear me, I do love our faculty and staff. Like I've said multiple times, they work tirelessly for our kids. But when a vast majority of them do not reside or pay taxes in this town, we have a duty and an obligation to our North Smithfield residents. Now, we do not condone violence or acts of violence, but civil discussion can happen, and it does get heated at times. As I've heard, sitting on the council before, from several people, if you can't take the heat, then you shouldn't take the position to lead. And with that, I'd like to read the resolution set before you, then open it up for discussion, and essentially vote. Resolution of the Town of North Smithfield, strong recommendation to school district and immediate withholding of RIASC membership dues. Whereas the North Smithfield School Committee is a participating member of the RIASC Rhode Island Association of School Committees, and whereas, in response to the National School Boards Association NSBS letter to the Biden administration dated September 29th, 2021, requesting federal assistance regarding threats and disruptive events occurring at school board meetings across the nation. And whereas the Ohio School Board Association Board of Trustees informed NSBA that their organization will no longer continue its membership in the National School Board Association, and whereas the Missouri School Board Association Board of Directors informed its members and NSBA that their organization will withdraw its membership effective immediately in the National School Board Association, and whereas the governing board of Pennsylvania School Board Association voted unanimously to cancel their longstanding relationship in the National School Board Association, and whereas on October 5th, the Rhode Island Association of School Committees immediately released correspondence indicating RIASC would cooperate with federal law enforcement to engage with our constituents potentially adversely. And whereas the North Smithfield School Committee was not consulted about the content of the October 5th, 2021 correspondence. And whereas we would be doing a disservice to our constituents if we did not evaluate the cost, benefit, and reputational risk of our town and the hard work both the town council and the school committee have collectively accomplished during this past year, only to continue paying memberships, membership dues to RIASC. And whereas on October 19th, 2021, the Gloucester School Committee passed a resolution unanimously for such action. And whereas the North Smithfield Town Council expresses very strong concerns surrounding RIASC's government, leadership, and failure to embrace parental criticism. And whereas the North Smithfield Town Council condemns the RIASC recent statements in the NSBA letter demonizing our parents. Be it therefore resolved, the North Smithfield Town Council respectfully requests that the North Smithfield School Committee review and strongly consider a resolution to immediately withhold its membership dues to RIASC, the Rhode Island Association of School Committees, until further notice. So I just want to add, I just want to add one other thing. Breaking down this resolution, it's main focus, obviously realizing that they're two separate bodies, and we can't, we can't tell what, we can't tell the school committee members what to do. I get that, I understand that, and that's not the intent of this. But I've been presented by multiple families, multiple taxpaying residents in, in this town that have approached me and have, have asked, you know, what, you know, Steve, what are you going to do? What is Town Council going to do about what's going on with the National School Board Association and this notification that came out from the Rhode Island Association of School Committees? And my initial reaction, my initial response was, you have to go to the next school committee meeting. And their response back to me, I don't feel comfortable. I don't feel as though I'm going to be heard, I don't feel as though, I feel as though, based on what I'm bringing to them and what they're responding in kind of having the ability to potentially feel as though that criticism might cause a, a threat to them or faculty members, they are not in a position to want to do that. So that was very difficult for me to hear, and the next response that I felt as though needed to be done was to ensure that it was a topic of discussion with the school committee on their agenda. This would be the most logical approach to take.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Carver? Comments?
I have no questions, but he's absolutely correct. This shouldn't even be here. I'll be honest with you. We can make any recommendation we want to the, to the school board. They're a quasi-state agency. We have no control over them. We do one thing for the school department, we gross appropriate them. We cannot tell them how to spend one penny of that money. If you feel this is an issue that should be addressed with the school board, please go to the next school board meeting and address it with them. I'm not voting for this resolution. I see no reason for it, because it means nothing. It has no weight. Oh, we recommend that you do this. We have no control over them. It carries no weight. If, if you felt it was that important, then have a joint meeting with the school committee. No different when the mask thing was going around. I had made the recommendation, we should have a meeting with them, so at least we're all on the same page, and we understand where we're going with this thing. And it fell on deaf ears. This is no different. So if you think it's a school, school department issue, which it is, then go visit the school department. It doesn't belong at this desk. My opinion. I've sat in that seat for 15 years. I've taken the heat, just like I take the heat here. This is a school board issue. If the school committee thinks that they shouldn't be paying RIASC dues because they don't like the policies of the National School Board, then let the school, school department and the school committee fight the fight. I'm not going to bother with it. It's got nothing to do with me, I have no control over it.
Anybody else? Can you make it relevant? Right now, we're looking at an abstract national issue. Can you make it relevant to North Smithfield?
I mean, I can make it, I know, I know it was brought up earlier with, with what occurred several years ago with a national issue, which was, which was Nike. And, you know, I, I, I'd have to agree that it was, with the Nike issue, was, it was, it was a national issue that was taken on from Town Council. And I think where it got lost in the mix was, as a result of, of that resolution getting passed, to not purchase anything, any Nike products, anything Nike-related, it stayed pretty much at the Town Council level. Well, as far as I've seen, I've never seen any voice that has come from, from Nike that we purchased products, or at least to date. However, when that translated over to the school side, I recall a lot of the parents and a lot of the students went to school the very next day wearing Nike products as a, call it a protest. Okay? I think this is a little bit different, because I think it hits at the core of, of the parents that would normally be protesting something, now to be hesitant on protesting something that could potentially be reported to police enforcement and/or an FBI investigation. Again, I don't know, I don't know if this would be a topic that would be brought up on the agenda of the school committee. But again, when I was getting numerous calls, to, to hopefully see it there on a school committee agenda, I felt as though, you know, we as a Town Council could recommend that they strongly consider it and review the information that's, that's in front of them, and then make, make that, make that decision. But again, just to reiterate, understanding that we cannot dictate, as what Councilman Vaden, they say, we cannot dictate what the school committee members essentially vote on.
Mr. LeDuke, what do you say? I'd like to hear your opinion. You always have strong opinions. What do you think?
I think Representative Johnson, who was the first person who talked to Attorney General Garland, and then Jim Jordan, who's from the 4th Congressional District of Ohio, have nothing to do with the North Smithfield Town Council, North Smith committees whatsoever. And it just seems that Mr. Carver unfortunately resonates with them very strongly and has very visceral feelings about Merrick Garland and the Biden administration, and he's bringing it to that desk where it does not belong.
Well, for me, the thing that affected me is calling parents. Parents are the backbone of any institution, educational institution. And they're going to say, if they disagree with the council, that makes them, I mean, dangerous? And they should have no say in anything?
I don't think so at all. I think-
I think this is what this resolution is saying, that what went down is a first step to total control.
I disagree, because the incidences that are being regarded as threats and violence are people shouting up at teachers or school board members' houses, sending threatening messages to them about them or their children, people shouting anti-Semitic remarks. People who are doing that kind of activity, that kind of behavior, that kind of unruliness should be reported to the FBI, but I don't think we have that problem in this town.
All right. You know what? First of all, this is not a public hearing, and I know that you were asked, so I'm not blaming you.
I'm sorry, I said it directly, because, you know, he's starting to come today, and-
No, and that's great, but if, although my only point I was going to get, if somebody does call on you, can you just go up to the podium? Because people in the-
I'm sorry.
People at home can't hear what you're saying.
Sure. In future, I shall do that.
So, anybody else?
I, I actually have an opinion on this. I think that there, there is overreach, and I think the First Amendment is there not to protect the government from the people, but the people from the government. This is tough for me, honestly, because I've been down this road before. Not quite the same. You're right, it's not quite the same. Not the same at all, actually. But was there a lesson learned? I, I support you 100% in, in what you're doing. I think your heart's in the right place, and, and your politics are definitely in the right place, but I'm, I'm not so sure that we're, I don't know, I'm wrestling with this as far as maybe possibly tabling to, to get more input on, on the school committee's position on this. And then we, if we know what the schools committee's position on this, then we can say that we disagree with your position on this. Right now, I don't, I don't know what their position is. Maybe we could just ask them their position on this, and then come back and revisit it. Because right now, it's, it's kind of an abstract idea, that they, they could agree with us, for all I know.
Well, and I, and I agree with that, but it does, you know, it does state that, that we're requesting that they review and consider a resolution regardless of whatever they, you know, whatever they, whatever they discuss at that point. So it's not, it's not us, it's not, it's not Town Council deciding what direction they decide to go in, but it, again, it's, it's ensuring that it's a topic of discussion.
It's going to be a topic of discussion. Claire called on somebody, and now somebody else wants to speak. So I will, at this point, make a motion to open up this agenda item to public comment, because fair is fair. So I will make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. It's just agenda item only.
Ms. Howard? Yes.
Ms. DeMaro?
Yes.
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 Yes. Do you want to speak?
Very quickly, I just want to caution you that you're delving into an organization that you don't even know what the services are that they provide to school committees, having served on the school committee for a total of five years in North Smithfield. That's the only resource that we have, or we did have, maybe the zoom out there, that provides information that we use in negotiations with teacher contracts. They have, they collab all contracts statewide, who gets what type of benefit, what the average class size is. I didn't feel like it was a good investment, and we belong to that organization, but for the $3,000 per day at the time, or $5,000, it gives you at least data that no one is going to collect for you. And that's why the teachers, the school committees are all disadvantaged collectively bodily, because the unions have a huge database to work off of, and you get that information freely. So when I'm talking about protecting the tax base, I'm thinking to myself, is this a contract idea? When is the contract coming up? When is it started? And who's going to provide them with that data? It's a decision for the school committee, based on the fact of what they know, what they need from that board. They know whether they need to belong to that organization now or not. But I don't think you should put any political pressure on them for a political purpose. I think it should be strictly, they should trust it on their own, they're familiar with what data they receive, what services they receive, and how much value it delivers.
Come on up. Once again, your name, and-
Joyce of Vigney, 17, 90, Pontill Road. I guess my question is this, are we looking for you guys to pass the resolution, or just tell the school committee, hey, you guys need to look at this resolution? I guess that's my question, because there are a lot of parents out there that are afraid to get up in front of these committees and speak. And now that you've got this quote-unquote domestic terrorism thing put over your head, who's going to be chopping your door? The FBI? The police? You go to the school committee meeting as it is now- You go to the school committee meeting as it is now, and there's a cop standing in the back of the room watching everything that's going on. So I agree with Mr. Carver. I mean, when does this stop? I should be able to get up at that school committee meeting and have a heated discussion about whether my kids mask or unmask. And that should be my right as a US citizen, and it's being stripped away from us. So I guess my question to you guys is, is if all this resolution is, is, hey, school committee, take a look at this, I don't see a big deal with it. Because the school committee needs to take a look at it, and I'm not so sure who we have sitting there, they're even going to take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Does anyone on the council have anything further to say? No? All right.
I'd like to table this, because I have, and out of respect, because I know where you're coming from. And I am just going to take next couple of weeks, because I know last time intentions were good. I didn't even, I don't even look at football, I just respect the American flag. And from that, I had to have alarm systems put on my house. You want to talk about terrorisms? It's the same people that are trying to get this enforced, that we, it was, a resolution isn't even binding. It's saying, we think this. You can think that, but we're not supposed to think that. And I was called a bigot. And my grandchildren the next day, I'm going to be honest, Nike is a wide cut, and I had chunky grandkids, that's all I buy them at that time. Now they're like this.
All right, well, you know what, though? We're not even really, this whole Nike thing, it doesn't have to be relitigated.
It was touchy for me now, and certain aspects, it came back on me again. I am basically libertarian, I believe in our Constitution, I believe you have a right to say something, it's how you say something. Believe it. Today I got it. And right now, everything he said, I believe in, but I am frightened on how some people, and it's a small minority, can do to our families. I went through it once. I'm afraid to go through it a second time. And let's end it there. I never thought we'd dislike this, and I, the resolution, I think is marvelous. But after, I'm thinking, this resolution, no matter how, right, I believe it is, I have people I love, and I'm afraid what it will do to them. That's all I have to say.
Well, I'm personally, I'm not frightened of them or anybody in that sense, to be honest with you. And I wouldn't be intimidated out of a vote, because I'm frightened of what someone, you know, some group or something may try to do, but I just think that maybe, so if I ask, if I motion to table this for further study, it has nothing to do with the fact that anything in the past, I'm just trying to, just trying to get more information, and...
Listen, I'm fine if we table it. Again, the intent of the resolution was to be a voice for several residents, several parents that had approached me on what is, what has transpired over the last week and a half, both on the federal level as well as the state level. Had this just been a federal issue, you know, which we're in the thick of a lot of federal issues right now, that's not something I probably would have agreed to present to town council, but where it took the approach on the state level, and it affects several families throughout our town, as well as other taxpayers, and they felt like they didn't have a voice going to school committee meetings. You know, I felt like the least we could do is make sure that it's front and center for the school committee to look at, whether it's through this, passing of a resolution, or whether it's setting it aside, but yet now they know that it should be front and center, and it should be a topic of discussion. Because if there is concern with residents, then I agree with Councilman Vatney, that is something that the school committee should take up, and it shouldn't be on the heels of our recommendation.
See, people can agree with you, and then just, what I've learned is, people can and will agree with you, but they might think, yeah, I agree with you, but it's probably not the place or the time. And then I would, that's a lot of the feedback that I received, but, and I think that would be the case again. People would agree that parents shouldn't be put on a terrorist list just because they disagree. But is that happening in North Smithfield? You know? I was at the meeting with the masks, and I didn't see a single, someone, I didn't see a single incident where somebody could have been charged with disorderly conduct, never mind be put on a terrorist list, but if somebody, according to, based on the AG's report, if somebody made a complaint, then they would be on a report. So I agree with you in principle, but I'm just not sure if this is the venue. But I'm with you on principle, honest.
It all goes back to what we started with at the beginning of this meeting. People have no respect for one another. That's the bottom line. I can disagree with you all day. When I get off the dais, it's done. Today, people have no respect for one another. We spent an hour, because two neighbors don't get along. We spent an hour of our time that we will never get back, because two neighbors don't get along. Think about it. And this comes down to the same thing, where people in the audience don't get along with the school committee, and they take personal offense at it, and it becomes a federal case. No pun intended. And you know what? It's just, it's a waste of our time. It really is. It has nothing to do with this table. It's a school committee issue, and you know what? Mike, I can't believe I'm saying this, but I agree with you, because for one issue with the Rhode Island Association of School Committees, we're going to throw the whole thing out? You guys don't understand all of the resources that they provide to your school committee that help them out in a number of ways. More than the contracts, Mike. It's more than the contracts. And so they do provide a good service, and they do provide, it's a good warehouse, whatever you want to call it, of information, and they're lobbying at the State House for their own good and everything. So we're going to throw the whole thing out for one issue? It doesn't even belong here. It's a school committee issue.
Okay. So we have a motion to table from Ms. O'Hara. Do we have a second? Table it?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
No.
Yes.
I'll table it, but it doesn't belong here.
Yes. So down to, discussion by council vote of other action on appointment of new town planner, Mr. Mark Corullo, who was appointed by the town administrator.
Mr. President, there's some happy news. We advertised looking for a town planner, we received nine applications. One took another position, one declined, and one was not qualified. There were six applicants, we had two back-to-back days of interviewing, three and three. It was a whole different process. By town charter, the planning board is to recommend three candidates to the town administrator for the town administrator's appointment. I changed it. I brought in two town planners, the county interview board, member of personnel board, benefits and payroll, benefits coordinator, administrative assistant, and myself. We interviewed three on one day, three on the other day. We brought a town to a shortlist of three. We gave it to the planning board, the two planners that were here were on the board. They sent their recommendations to me. Three highly qualified individuals. I can say that I've appointed Mark Corullo. He has a master's degree in planning, he's a certified planner, and his background is extensive, starting in the 1980s, starting out as a draftsman, working his way up through the ranks in the city of Warwick to become the director of planning for the city of Warwick. He moved over to West Warwick as the planner, due to political changes in the environment. He went over to West Warwick, he also served as the interim town manager, so he's highly, highly qualified. He's not here this evening, because there were some things he had to straighten out. So he actually said, I can come in Monday, I have to leave, I've got an appointment. I said, take Monday off, we'll see you Tuesday. I think he's a wonderful addition with a skill set that's going to impress everybody. So I've appointed Mark Corullo as the director of planning for the town of North Smithfield.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any, anything else? I think I got everything. I will entertain a motion to adjourn at this time. All in favor?
Aye.